Good evening, everybody. The time is now six o'clock. This is the time and place for our regular evening meeting of April 4th. We're going to start off the evening with an invocation which we mark with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Girl Scout Troop 293. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence? And now please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then we have some special patches that we're going to present to our Girl Scouts that commemorate that they joined us at a city council meeting. It's a special City of Boise Girl Scout patch. So I'm going to come down and give these to you. All right, thank you, everyone. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Agent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
All right, next on the agenda, we have request for approval of the city council minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the city council minutes on March 28th, 2023, at our noon session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I will abstain. I was not able to attend.
Very good. All right, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Woodings. Yes. Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Abstain.
Yes.
Willetts. Yes.
All in favor of motion carries.
We have no special business. So next we have item six, which is the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be retained by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which the, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
I will also recuse from Resolution 17223 as it includes Valley Regional Transit as one of the signees.
Noted. Any other discussion? I was just going to note that Resolution 172-23 is something that we've been working on for a very long time. It's a partnership on what we refer to as our cap, our Capitol campus down in the Lusk District. And it's a partnership between CCDC. Voice, or actually, no, this is the wrong one.
That's the downtown one.
Oh, this is the downtown one.
Yeah, let's see. Where is the last one?
I, oh, it's Resolution 177-23. That's what I meant. Which is a partnership between Boise State, CCDC, and the City of Boise to, and JF Development to redevelop our Capitol campus, which will result in a net gain of a lot of affordable housing and a lot of vibrancy for Lusk District, which is really exciting. So without any further comment, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Woodings. Yes. Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, and then on to ordinances. We don't have any ordinances on the first reading, but we have two on the second reading calendar.
Madam Mayor, I ask that unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-16-23, an ordinance, CAR 22-00036, for property located at 7050 South Federal Way, annexing approximately 4.16 acres of certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Boise City. Establishing and determining the land use classification of said 4.16 acres as M-1D, light industrial with design review overlay, setting forth a reading statement in support of annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance should be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and Idaho State Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing effective date. ORD-17-23, an ordinance, CAR 22-00031, for property located at 1 and 2 South Mesa Vista Drive and 145 West Dover Lane. Amending zoning classifications of the City of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R-2, medium density residential, to R-1C, single family residential. Saying for this reading statement in support of such zone change and providing effective date.
All right, thank you. We don't have any items on the third reading or unfinished business. So we'll move on to new business. Item A subdivisions. We have SOS 23-1 and Delaney Garlic here to present.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a request to vacate a platnot. The subject property is located at 2015 South Three Mile Creek Road in R1A Zone within the Three Mile Creek subdivision number one. The subdivision was originally recorded in 1962, and it depicts a 25-foot wide bridle path along the rear property line and identifies building setbacks on all the lots. The applicant requests to vacate the platnot related to the bridle path as well as vacate the rear setback. This would allow for a construction of a detached garage in the rear of the property behind the existing single-family home. The proposed accessory structure would meet the 30-foot rear setback of the R1A Zone. Therefore, the planning team recommends approval. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Delaney. Any questions? Motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move approval of SOS 23-1, vacation of platnot on Lot 5, Block 1 of Three Mile Creek subdivision.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Woodings. Yes. Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts. Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Delaney. Next up, we have our public hearings. First on the public hearing calendar is SOS 22-26, 4870 North Pharaoh Street. And to present, we have Matt Dennis. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the item before you is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny the waiver request for the construction of curb gutter and sidewalk as part of a minor land division on 0.9 acres located at 4870 North Pharaoh Street in an R1C Zone. Currently, there, currently, there is one single-family home on site. The administratively approved minor land division proposes two additional lots to the east of the existing home, which has street improvements that were installed as part of a separate subdivision approval. The subject minor land division application included a standard condition to install curb gutter and sidewalk along the remaining unimproved street section along Pharaoh Street. The applicant has appealed the February 13th decision from the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny the waiver request and has submitted the following grounds. As outlined in your memo, the planning team found no evidence suggesting the, the commission erred in its decision. There are no extenuating circumstances present on this site that are not generally applicable to the rest of the city. The planning team finds the commission, the commission's decision was not supported by, my apologies. The planning team finds the commission's decision was, was supported by substantial evidence and was not arbitrary or capricious. As outlined in your packet, the planning team recommends council denied the appeal and uphold the, the commission's original decision to deny the waiver request as it does not meet the required findings to prove the site contains unusual conditions, conditions to justify the waiver request.
So thank you. Do we have any questions for staff on this item? All right.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I do have a question. So just kind of looking at the rest of the areas in the neighborhood, there are some areas that have sidewalks on the opposite side of the street as well as some adjoining property lines. I think is it the north or the south property line that has sidewalks?
So that's correct. This, this diagram shows the sections of, of the street within this small neighborhood of, with sidewalks and without. The outlined, the yellow outline shows the sections of the street that are. And you are correct that some of these streets only have sidewalk on one side.
And then my, a couple of follow-up questions. It, it looks like on Cranberry Street, the way that the sidewalk ends, it sort of curves around, set up to continue to make it around the corner. Is it, am I looking at that photo correctly? Yeah. Great. And during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, I read through some of the transcript. It looks like this was talked about quite a bit, but then there was also some conversations about the power lines and challenges with the power lines. And I was wondering if you could just go over that quickly.
Yes, sir. So the power lines were measured by myself and they were shown to be at least six feet away from the edge of the existing pavement, meaning that there would be ample room for a sidewalk and curb and gutter as well. And then I should also add that fiber optic cables were, were mentioned in that as well. And, and that points back to a similar obstacle that's not, that it's, it's generally applicable to the rest of the city.
Sure. Thank you. Some more questions.
Any other questions for staff?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So it's true that there's already sidewalk on the other part of this lot and the applicant will not have to rebuild that sidewalk, only add this section of sidewalk on the side street as well as the corner. Is that correct?
Councilmember Craig, that's correct.
Thank you.
Great. Anything further? All right, thank you, Matt. Next up, we have our appellant, Casey and Jackie Parker. Go ahead and say your name and give your address for the record.
I am Jackie Parker, 4870 North Pharaoh Street.
I'm Casey Parker, 4870 North Pharaoh. And so that last, that last picture that you guys just saw.
Excuse me, sir. Will you make sure you're speaking into the microphone, please?
So that last picture that you guys just showed, that was one of the discrepancies that we had on the last hearing. They rushed to the judgment that basically they were, the only hardship was that they, that they focused on was financial hardship. But on that last photo that you saw, there, that was the fiber optics right there. And Mr. Dennis, last time we were here, he said that when he was out on his inspection, the commissioner was asking if there was fiber optics and he said, I don't believe so. I think they're underground. So that was one of the, you know, discrepancies of hardship that is right, you know, right there. And again, like our whole subdivision, it is built, I mean, that, the hickories there. And, and the, the other picture that you guys just showed, it was great because you see down the hickories. I mean, there's only one sidewalk on, on that whole, in the whole subdivision. And it just doesn't, it doesn't, to have one sidewalk there, it just doesn't make sense. And, and it, it doesn't, you know, correlate with the rest of, of the, of our subdivision. But she has more information and then I've got a little to add on to that, too.
Okay, so the original application for a minor land division provides for the creation of two extra residential lots that front West Cranberry Court. When approved, the two new lots would have their own tax lot numbers. The creation of these two additional residential lots meets the Boise City Comprehensive Plan to infill and provide additional housing within the City of Boise. The proposed new lots front on West Cranberry Court and have no access directly to Pharaoh Street other than along West Cranberry Court. West Cranberry Court is a residential neighborhood with single-family residences and has existing curb gutter and sidewalk, including the side yard of the existing residence and the 0.9 acres, including where the proposed two new lots would be. When our property was developed in 1973, the properties along Pharaoh Street were designed as a rural development with net densities of one dwelling per acre. In such cases, a walk would be constructed along one side of the street to preserve the rural setting. Pharaoh Street has curb gutter and sidewalk along the west side of the street. The east side of North Pharaoh Street does not have any curb gutter or sidewalks, providing a more rural feeling. And that's all the way, the whole street. The requirements to construct curb gutter and sidewalk along a small portion of the street that was not designed to have a sidewalk in is out of step with the overall calm residential and rural setting for the street. Out of respect for our neighbors along Pharaoh Street, it would be inappropriate to change the overall calm residential and rural setting by adding a short sidewalk on the east side of the street that has an abrupt stop. When West Cranberry Court began development, it became apparent that the eastern portion of our property, which was, is pasture land, was more suitable to be developed in a manner capable or compatible with our neighbors on West Cranberry Court. Currently, the pasture requires weekly flood irrigation. By parcelling, water would be saved as well. And out of respect for our neighbors and to assist in the creation of two additional residential lots that meet Boise City Comprehensive Plan to infill and provide additional housing within the City of Boise, we requested a minor division to create two new residential lots fronting on West Cranberry Court. As I stated before, West Cranberry Court has curb gutter and sidewalks from the intersection to North Pharaoh Street to the east end of West Cranberry Court. The proposed new lots have existing curb gutter and sidewalks on the front edge, requiring restrictions or requiring restriction on a parcel not directly involved in a minor land division is not reasonable. Planning and zoning should only address the parcels involved in the minor land division and not the adjoining land when the existing land use remains unchanged. Out of respect for the neighborhood, the waiver for the requirement to construct a non-compatible sidewalk along North Pharaoh Street should be approved. This approval would allow the West Cranberry properties to be developed in a manner compatible with the adjoining land. And here's some errors. The requirements for the construction of a five-foot sidewalk with curb and gutter along 4870 North Pharaoh Street in front of the existing residence was an error in application of the Boise City Planning and Zoning. The Boise Planning and Zoning Commission further erred when they denied the request for a waiver to the subdivision ordinance requirement. The following are the major points concerning of error made. Number one, requiring construction of a sidewalk, which is out of character with the adjoining neighborhood, is not a reasonable requirement. North Pharaoh Street can remain unchanged without impacting the setting for residential lots on West Cranberry Court. Number two, adding a sidewalk to nowhere in front of a single lot along a street is not appropriate or reasonable for the consideration of establishing an unconnected lot. The sidewalk to nowhere would have a major adverse visual impact on the other residents along Pharaoh Street. The sidewalk to nowhere would also create a hazard on Pharaoh Street. Number three, District Policy 7207.57 states that the standard street section be 33-foot wide back to, of curb to back of curb. A five-foot wide sidewalk should be located a minimum of 16 feet from the center line of the street. Currently, there is 23 feet of street, which means there is only 11 and a half feet from the center line of the street. On trash day, that goes down to 19 feet, which is hard for cars to squeeze through and for emergency vehicles and utility vehicles. We just had a, we just had a tree trimming truck there in our neighborhood this week. And trying to get around that, the cars were backed up on both sides. And then number four, 300 to 400 feet north of our property on Pharaoh Street, the wide, the road widens to 34.8 feet. There's still not a sidewalk on, on the west side of the, or the east side of the property. And even when you turn from there, you can turn east onto Hickory Drive. As you saw, there are no sidewalks on the south side of the properties there. Number five, fiber optics have been in, have been put in. And there's a box that is on the surface and would be in the way as well as, he says, the power lines aren't going to be in the way. I, I feel like they will. And last time we were here, we didn't really feel heard. In an appeal after ours that night regarding a California company trying to kick some senior citizens out of their place of dwelling.
Ma'am, can we please keep the comments to your application?
This one now?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let me, so tonight we are requesting that the Boise City Council correct the errors that have been made and approve our request for a waiver to the subdivision ordinance. The waiver requested would remove the unreasonable requirements to construct curb gutter and sidewalk along North Pharaoh Street as part of a minor land division, creating two residential lots on West Cranberry Court in an R1C Zone.
So another thing that came up, there's a little discrepancy in the ACHD, the ACHD between us and Mr. Dennis. ACHD said that there was not, that they were not requiring sidewalks right here. They said if there was to be sidewalks put in, they would like them, again, at 16 and a half feet, not 12. And so basically there was, you know, there's going to be another like 10 to 12 feet of, of city, you know, basically city space before that sidewalk and then connects, yeah. And I, I mean, and then the other, you know, the, one of the commissioners said that, you know, a tight street is a safe street. But it, I mean, I wish that you guys could actually see it because it's, it's not. I mean, I also, I sent a picture to Mr. Dennis. You know, it was trash day, so I put my trash can out in the road to where it would actually be after we had a sidewalk. It, it just doesn't make sense. And so, and then later on, the commission, there was a commissioner that said that they just made a, you know, a couple put in a sidewalk to nowhere. And it's basically a sidewalk to nowhere, a sidewalk out in the street. And it, and he also mentioned that it's a sidewalk that's not even adjacent to the property. And, and then I, I wanted to thank, I was hoping Mr. Blanchard would be here because I didn't know how all this worked and who's, who is going to be here. But he, he mentioned us and basically about Boise ethics and morals. And I think it's unethical and unmoral to have a hearing and facts are skewed. I mean, that's just, it's, it's, it's wrong with me. And I think Doc, or Commissioner Daniel, he said, yeah, it's a hard pill to swallow, but I'm not going to swallow that pill when it's based off of, of, you know, fake, basically fictitious stuff. Not facts. So you could tell that they were, that they were, you know, they were not pleased with it. We were not pleased with it. I think there's something in between the two that, that needs to be looked at. So I guess that's all we got.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the appellant?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for the Parkers. Parkers, welcome. This is my subdivision. This is where I live. Yeah, so I'm very, very familiar with this.
All right.
And, and I want to see if your perception matches my perception. So you're right. It, it's a, it was meant as a rural subdivision at one point, a rural area. And so to the east, you can walk, you know, the entire way down and you hit us, you hit another sidewalk. On the other side, actually, I've had that, that crossed would be.
On the west.
Yeah, on the west.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalk at all. And so what happens is for this new infill development, and we have a very walking neighborhood. People walk all the time and a lot of people are outside in their yards. If they want to go into the infill, they have to cross the street. And they then go in on that sidewalk for that infill. But then if they want to stay on that side without the sidewalk, they're, they're basically walking in the road. It's unstable. There's a lot of, there's a lot of debris. It's, there's a lot of potholes. It's, it's not steady for anyone. So they already have to cross the street to go. So in your, you've lived there for a while. In your experience, do people stay on your side of the street? Or do they actually cross the street to go to the sidewalk, which is more stable and safe?
They cross the street to go, yeah. Because again, there's, as you know, there's no sidewalks all the way down.
No, for a block and a half. It's that entire area plus the other half.
I think that's what makes our, that spot so desirable is because it is open. It is, I mean, we don't, we don't want the concrete.
Well, and even if they.
If you go down the hickories and around, I mean, there's no, I mean, like Fiveshire, I think it is. There, there's still, I mean, one sidewalk all the way through there.
Yeah, I think I, you know, obviously you'd like it to be consistent, but in this case, it's not consistent at all because you have a block and a half where there's no sidewalk on that side whatsoever.
Yeah, and so ours would end and then there's still no sidewalk.
Right.
To continuing sidewalk.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm going to rein this in a little bit. Can we keep it to question and answer instead of conversation, please?
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Isn't it true that there's an elementary school across the street on McMillan?
There is, but none of those kids go to that school. It, it's not in our, it's in a different, what do they call that? A different zone.
But yes, there is.
And none of them ever walk over there on a weekend to play in the schoolyard?
Maybe, yeah, I don't know. But again, but so, but again, if the, if we had a sidewalk there, it puts them back in the road. I mean, they have to walk.
Well, and then they're, and they're.
Answer the question and I, I understand that. You've already made that very clear.
Okay.
The point of the ordinance frankly is that as infill happens, lot at a time, you get the sidewalk completed. So if we give you a waiver and your neighbor comes in and asks for infill on their lot, they'll say, well, you gave my neighbor a waiver. I shouldn't have to put a sidewalk either. How would we ever infill the sidewalks in that case?
I don't ever see those sidewalks being infilled. We are like the last property there that has property to subdivide. All the other properties are smaller and I don't see them ever, ever adding to.
Well, and some of them have already subdivided and so they're, they're done.
Uh, because Johnson's down there. They had a new home built.
I'm, I'm just going to rein this in one more time. Can you keep your, can you keep your answers as concise as possible, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I've got a couple of specific questions. So you mentioned something at the end that I think we need to make sure that we've got figured out. You said that there were a number of facts that were skewed at the Planning and Zoning meeting, which is important because like our job right now is to figure out if planning and zoning made an error, a capricious decision, arbitrary decision. And so I'm wondering if you can list the facts that were skewed by the Planning and Zoning Commissioner or by the city staff so that we can make sure that we figure out if those were an error or not.
Okay, so the tight road, the tight road is one. And then the fiber optics, they, they rushed to the decision that there was all underground when I, you know, expressed it and there was pictures of it right there. And then, yeah, the ACHD, that was another, I think one of the commissioners had to ask Mr. Dennis again on the, on the facts. But he said that, you know, basically ACHD is not requiring it and they would like the sidewalk to be put at 16 and a half feet. And right now it would be 12 feet.
11 and a half.
11 and a half. So, I mean, yeah.
All right, so I've got, one of the facts was a tight road.
Tight road, oh yeah, sorry, tight road.
Can you tell me what that means? Because that's, to me, I can't figure out like what a tight road means for a fact.
So I, I sent pictures in too of this, but I mean, I think our road is only what, 22 feet wide?
23 feet.
23 feet wide. And again, it's just, it's not safe. I mean, it's just a very tight road and ACHD said.
They want a 33 feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so the tight road, the other one was that there weren't fiber optics?
Yes, yeah.
And then I believe that that was later discussed in the Planning and Zoning Commission and they had a discussion about the fiber optics.
Yes, and they assumed it was underground and it was not an issue.
Okay, the third one, ACHD is, is not requiring a sidewalk. So that's the other crack that you're presenting. Was there another one that I was missing? I felt like you said there was a fourth one.
I think that was it.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, one more question.
Yes.
So I think that there's been some comment about the sidewalk extending further out and narrowing the street significantly. And I'm trying to look, look at the, the photos I've seen and maybe staff can speak to this as well. What it looks like to me is that the sidewalk isn't extending into the street. It's covering the dirt patch that's along the side of the street. So maybe you can help clear that up to me. Is it, is it covering the dirt patch or is it actually, the dirt patch is still going to stay there? And then the sidewalk moves five feet further into the street?
So from what I, from what I understand is Mr. Dennis wanted the sidewalk put right on, on the road, on the edge of the road. And so it'd be in between the power pole and, and the road. And, but then there would be another probably 12 feet of city, of city property right there, which would be just gravel.
Okay.
Thank you. Further questions?
Madam Mayor, just one more. I, I didn't understand what you had to say about the original lot not being associated with subdivision. Because in my mind, if you subdivide a lot, it's associated with that subdivision. That's how it all started. So could you clarify that for me or maybe answer that confusion I have?
Well, the one commissioner, just later on, after we had left, he had mentioned that. So basically, yeah, I don't know. You want to answer this one?
Well, so the property that, yes, it is obviously all one piece of property, but the property that we're subdividing and putting the two new lots on is at the back of the property, which is the, access will be on Cranberry Court and not on Pharaoh Street. and not on Pharaoh Street. That already ha, is all developed for sidewalk curbing and gutter. So our house sits at the very front of Pharaoh Street. So the back property, just don't really, it, it's not gonna be associated with the, with Pharaoh Street, with ax, I mean, access on Pharaoh Street. You will access it through West Cranberry Court, which has all the development already there.
So, so basically what we're trying to achieve is, you know, uh, the two lots that would be there, I mean, they would tie right back in with that subdivision that's there. And Pharaoh would look the same. I mean, it would look like what it is. I mean, it'd be the open, open feel. Um, and yeah. And then also Mr. Dennis was out there. He's mentioned that it doesn't look like we have any drainage issues. So, I mean, there's that too. I mean.
Wait, sir. I think you answered the question. Thank you. Um, are there any further questions for the appellant? All right. Well, thank you very much. You may have, um, you'll probably have an, uh, opportunity to come up and give some rebuttal at the end. If that works for you. All right. We have for the Neighborhood Association, West Valley Neighborhood Association. Is there anyone here from West Valley? All right. And I am not expecting any members of the public and we don't have a party, or we actually do have a couple of parties of record. Is there anyone here who's planning to testify on this item? All right, hearing none. Um, we can go back to some questions for staff if anyone has some. I think that there probably are.
Yep. Madam Mayor, I've got a question for staff. So I think you maybe saw this one coming because you pulled it up on the slide. So the question is, how much are we narrowing the street or how much of the sidewalk is actually on that side section of the street? That's essentially dirt at this point.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, I think there is a discrepancy in the width of the, the right of way. I think that there being unimproved section of right of way that gravel, um, kind of leads to the misinterpretation of that still being right of way. So the agency comments that I had received from ACHD, lists the dimensions of the right of way, the curb gutter sidewalk that would be required. And, uh, so the width of the right of way listed by ACHD was thirty-eight feet, which is nineteen feet from center line. And, uh, that would leave, that would leave, uh, between eleven and twelve, depending on where you are on the street section of unimproved right of way. That's gravel now. Um, so it's really just kinda tied around the corners, around the, the, uh, power poles. But other than that, there's between eleven and twelve feet of unimproved right of way adjacent to the, to the site.
Yeah, so I, I think that I'm clear on that. The, the width of the road itself, um, are we, how much would we be narrowing the width of the road from what exists at this point? Maybe I'm just asking that question in a different way.
So the width of the right of way would not need to change. And that was stated within the report that there's enough.
Let me ask me, see if I can ask this maybe a different way. I think I've got a better way at this point. So if we installed the sidewalk now, do we know what the road width would be after the installation of the sidewalk?
The, the, the width, I apologize, the, the width of the.
Of the travel lanes themselves. So sidewalk to sidewalk, um, edge of sidewalk to edge of sidewalk. Do we know what the width would be if we installed the sidewalk on the other side of the street?
I believe it'd be right around thirty-two, thirty-three feet.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As I look at Google Maps and, and measure this, uh, uh, curb to curb north of this, even though there's not a sidewalk on the east side, there is a curb on the east side. And if you look curb to curb, it's thirty-six feet. It's true that the pavement in this section is narrower than that, um, by a fair amount. And in fact, there's landscaping. But I'm certain that as this development goes forward, the applicant would not be able to develop in that area because that area is right of way. And so the sidewalk, as I understand it, would be, in that area that's gravel and some landscaping today, um, with a pavement width of thirty-three feet, uh, back of curb to back of curb by ACHD's regulation. One thing that could be requested would be, um, no parking on this side of the street. And you could narrow that to twenty-nine feet.
Any other questions for staff?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. I reviewed the record and I just wanna clarify my converse, my understanding that, um, planning and zoning didn't spend a lot of time on pedestrian safety and how folks cross the road. Is that your recollection?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for staff? All right. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Parker, you're welcome to come up and, um, rebut anything that you've heard, clarify anything that you would like clarified.
Well, that was quick. There's another discrepancy. The road is not thirty-three feet wide. It's twenty-three feet wide. So.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To clarify, the pavement today is twenty-three feet wide, but the right of way is thirty, is more than thirty-three feet wide.
Where the gravel is?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, but he was talking about putting the sidewalk.
Up right.
On top of the gravel area, which would then.
Would only remain twenty-three feet.
Yeah.
It would never be any bigger. Because of the power poles and, yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanna get absolutely straight on this. The pavement is twenty-three feet wide, right?
Yes.
Then there's an additional five to seven feet of dirt gravel next to the pavement.
To, well, to the power pole and then probably another probably ten to twelve feet of city, city, you know, city property.
And so in that, in that.
Yeah, sorry.
In that dirt area, that's where the sidewalk is proposed to go, right?
And, yes, in the gravel area.
The pavement will not get any narrower, right?
It will not.
So the, the space you have to drive a car there will not change, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We'll just have to, yeah.
But again, I wish that you guys could see again, like, uh, the other day there was a tree trimming truck and they were driving, I mean, there was a line of cars behind them at both ways.
Okay, sir. Sir, you have four minutes and forty-eight seconds to provide any other comments or rebuttal that you'd like.
Be short.
Well, once, but then once we do put our, um, um, garbage can out there. Right now we keep our trash can in the gravel area. Um, when it's, when there is a curb there, we'll have to put it out in the road. So that will, we did put it out across from our neighbor's trash can, you know, where the side, where the curbing would be at the time. And, um, it just, it's, yeah, it's tight. It's tight.
Madam Mayor, one more question if I could.
Yes.
Does anyone ever park on this side of the street?
Yes.
In that gravel?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
A lot of utility workers and neighbors.
Yeah, neighbors. Absolutely. That, and again, our trash would be, I, I sent, I, uh, sent a picture in and our trash can was out. It would just, that would choke the road up, put the trash can out there. And I have a picture of the car coming through. Um, it just, it doesn't make sense. I wish the, I wish the, uh, Girl Scouts were here to, uh, help us out because I, I think that.
All right.
It wouldn't make sense to them either.
Any other, any further questions for the appellant? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Bajin.
Uh, I move to deny the appeal in SOS twenty-two, twenty-six, uh, forty-eight seventy, North Pharaoh.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Bajin.
I move to deny the appeal, um, because we're not hearing it in the first instance. We review other bodies' decisions and we have to identify something that not just we disagree with or we would reach a different conclusion, or we think the policy doesn't make sense in this particular place. We have to identify something clear and specific that they did wrong because I'll then take that feedback, um, and incorporate it into their future decisions. So here, um, the issues were a disagreement over whether the road is tight. Um, I'm sure it is. Uh, that the street itself, that the asphalt on the street itself is smaller than the right of way. It's a, it's a tight spot. But the place where the sidewalk is gonna go is not gonna make that space any smaller. I, I get that there's issues with trash cans or parking and, you know, at certain times it'll be tighter because of that. But that's true of everywhere in the city. And, and that's, you know, that's just kinda the way it works. Um, the fiber hardship issue. I get that too. Um, what we look for is an undue hardship, not just a, you know, something that is more expensive or a hardship. And so typically undue hardships are a lot that's shaped in a funny way or that has drainage issues or something that is like really pertinent to the land or the shape of the parcel that makes it truly unbearably undue to comply with what the code asked for. And moving a fiber box is, again, it's a hardship. It's a common hardship. It's not an undue one. And that's, that happens all over the city. Um, I do believe your original parcel is associated with the subdivision. Um, it's the personal, it's the parcel that was subdivided. It may not be associated with the future use of the two parcels you're creating. And in fact, you would hope that if you, if you subdivide it well. But the subdivision, the process of subdividing is certainly associated with the lot that's being subdivided. Um, and then the final one is that it's out of character with the neighborhood and, you know, characters in the eye of the beholder. It's really tough to reverse, uh, planning and zoning commission on the character issue. When reasonable minds can disagree, particularly here where the purpose of the sidewalk rule, as Councilmember Clegg discussed, isn't to do things that always make sense in the immediate term. But it's to think about where your parcel and your neighbor's parcels and your streets are going to be in thirty years, forty years, sixty years, eighty years. And it's clear in this part of town as, as well as many others. You know, we wanna move towards sidewalks. I understand everything you've said about the character and the feel of your street, but we get it both ways. We hear other people complaining that with, without a sidewalk, people are in the street and it's dangerous. And the policy, at least of our city, is to try to move to sidewalks along streets so that people can walk safely where cars aren't trying to park or where people aren't using that space to drive. Um, but at the end of the day, you can come to different conclusions about these things. And the planning and zoning commission could have come to a different conclusion and I would be probably voting to affirm them on that because the disagreements are in the places where reasonable people can disagree. Um, or at least where there's not a clear demonstrated error that requires us to, to reverse our, our own planning and zoning commission.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Clegg.
Um, I'll be supporting the motion. I seconded it because I, I largely agree with, with what, uh, Councilmember Bajin said. I actually agree with all of it with, um, just one additional comment. These are always difficult. Um, on infill lots where the city was allowed to build without sidewalks and it's now urbanizing, it's no longer rural neighborhood. It's an urban neighborhood. It's very much surrounded by, um, all kinds of things that, that indicate that. And that transition period is very difficult. I don't argue with that. Whoever put the sidewalk in on Cranberry was, um, asked to and did do exactly what we're asking of you. And that is, uh, infill a small section of sidewalk, recognizing that at some point in the future, uh, it will connect when, when the rest of the land redevelops and/or a policy is, is brought forward to complete it. So I agree, not because I think it's easier for you, but because I think it's the right thing. It's the policy we've adopted. And if we, uh, simply say, gosh, in this case, we just won't support that policy, then we should, uh, get rid of the policy. I think all, many of us up here support the policy because ultimately it leads to a neighborhood that is more walkable and that's the end goal. So for me, that's a bigger issue than just this one lot.
Councilmember Willet.
Madam Mayor, um, with respect to my colleagues, I'm gonna be voting no. Um, I live in this neighborhood. I've walked these streets. I've driven them thousands and thousands of times. And I think there's, there's something important to note here. And, and first of all, we all want our city to be walkable. We don't want to have one side of the street and not have sidewalks and have to have people go back and forth because they can't have a stable place to walk. And in this case, I don't believe that, uh, planning and zoning really consider pedestrian state, safety because that other side is a full sidewalk, woo, a full sidewalk that will take you all the way to McMillan. The opposite side, it's not. It's for a good block and a half. And so what happens is, is that people walk that other side. If they are coming out of that infill, they're gonna cross the street because even if you have this sidewalk, because then there's still another lot to get to the main road. So what we're doing is we're, we really are creating one patch of sidewalk that doesn't connect to anything and people are still gonna have to cross the road. Now, the other thing to consider about this area is that this really is the last of the infill. The other surrounding lots are all single lots. They're all single family lots. They're not gonna be able to be subdivided. They're part of HOAs. And so we're doing this for this one area, but we'll never be able to go to the dis, go the distance. So I, I think in this, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, even though we want sidewalks everywhere. We want kids to be able to walk to that park. We want them to be able to cross McMillan safely, but they're just not going to anyway because it's not safe now. Cause they have to just go that other way. So they're gonna be going to Demire or they're gonna be headed that entire way on that one piece of sidewalk because that's the only way for, for a good block and a half. It's just how the area developed. I wish it was different. I walk there all the time. I don't like walking on the gravel. I don't like walking on the street. But to have it just in front of your home, i- it's not safe for pedestrians. They're still gonna have to cross the street. So I'll be voting no.
Madam Mayor, um, there's not a whole lot that I can add to this discussion at this point. I'll certainly be supporting the motion. I agree with Councilmember Bajin that we're really making decisions that have to have an impact forty years down the road from now. And we don't know exactly how this neighborhood is gonna develop forty years down the road. Um, a block and a half up the street, there is sidewalk for a stretch that was put in and bit by bit, there can be, continue to be more. One of the reasons why we have this in code and in ordinance is that there are people with disabilities who don't have the ability to cross the street easily or who don't have the ability to, um, to move into gravel, um, type of space. And so we really are trying to create a city for everyone in the future. And there's a reason why we have this in, in code and in ordinance to do this. And I guess the one thing that maybe I would disagree with is that if, if the planning and zoning commission would have gone against this, if they would have gone the other way, I would have had to have found a reason that they decided to go against city code and ordinance. And if we do make these decisions not based on city code and ordinance, then it is arbitrary. Then we're really picking and choosing when it's going to apply and not going to apply. And if we have road widths that accommodate the requirements within the ordinance, um, we shouldn't be picking and choosing. We should be looking at the long range goal. And so that's why I'm gonna be supporting the order, uh, supporting the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Widdings?
Yes.
Agent?
Yes.
Clegg?
Yes.
Holly Burton?
Yes.
Willetts?
No.
Or in favor when opposed motion carries?
Thank you for coming up tonight. All right. The next item on our agenda is CR twenty-two dash thirty-four, Pivot North Architecture, um, reconsideration of City Council's approval of a rezone. And our presenter is Jesse Lyle. Welcome, Jesse.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Uh, the item for you is CR twenty-two dash thirty-four, a rezone of approximately zero point eight seven acres from RODD to C five DDDA located at six seventy-two Ash Street. The applicant is requesting to rezon for parcels that contain a total of sixteen naturally occurring affordable units. The applicant is proposing to rezon this to construct approximately one hundred and thirty residential units with some commercial space. This item may look familiar as it was first seen on February fourteenth. At that meeting, council voted to approve the reason in the DA. Excuse me. But during deliberations, indicated concerns about the level of affordability and the number of income restricted units proposed as well as the contingency of the income restricted units on the CCDC funding. At the following meeting on February twenty-eighth, council voted to reconsider the application. On March thirteenth, CCDC designated this project for a type two general assistance and will require the applicant to dedicate thirteen units at one hundred percent AMI for six years. Since then, conversations with CCDC have led to modifications to remove the affordability covenant from the DA because there is a separate agreement between the applicant and CCDC. This is further outlined in the project memo in the DA drafting report. To address council's concerns from the February fourteenth meeting, the planning team recommends that the applicant dedicate two additional units to our Path Home at sixty percent AMI for fifteen years. Our Path Home is a program working to enhance. Our Path Home is a program working to end homelessness with partnerships between the city of Boise and other agencies. This proposal would be a separate agreement from the applicant's agreement with CCDC and does not contingent on the applicant's ability to complete this project prior to the sun setting of this urban renewal district. Additionally, this would provide deeper affordability for a longer period of time. The DA included in your packet does not contain this affordability clause, and the council has the ability to modify the proposed DA associated with the reason or to add additional conditions. In conclusion, the commission recommends approval, and I'll be happy to stand for any questions. Additionally, if there are questions concerning the CCDC agreement or dedicated units program, we have representatives from CCDC and HCD available tonight.
Thank you, Jesse. Is there any, are there any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have two questions, and I don't know, this might be a CCDC question, but I'll throw it out to you. So one is that the affordability requirements weren't included in the agreement, and I think that was because there was a concern about timing. I, I'd like to get some more clarity on that. And then the second is I have one of the, one question about the review of the green energy code that they want to use. So maybe we'll do the first one and then the second one.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, so there was some timing initially that was different on our side versus CCDC. CCDC and the city are pretty new to partnering in this kind of situation in this area. And so this was a learning opportunity for everyone to try to make sure that our policies match up and our procedures match up. So that was part of it. And then the recommendation for the other units is essentially to try to address some of the other concerns brought up there.
I guess my, the heart of my question goes to whether it's legally binding. You know, we'll approve it here based on that good faith, but it's not actually in the, in the documentation. So I just want to get clarity on that, because I would hate for us to go forward viewing that there were going to be additional units, only to find out because it wasn't in the documentation, it could be challenged.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I can take a stab at this one, and then maybe CCDC can clarify. But essentially, we decided that it was probably a better idea to take the units out of our DA because this was a different funding source in a different agreement. So since it has been designated as a Type 2 project, then there is an affordability agreement between CCDC and the applicant.
You're getting a head nod, so that's good. Madam Mayor, may I ask the other question? Or would you like others?
Please do.
Okay. So I saw in the agreement that there was a requirement, well, let me, let me back that up a little bit, that the city would do a review of energy efficiency. But none of those suggestions would be binding. But the applicant would need to explain why they didn't do those. And I'm wondering if something is non-binding, why are we making them go through the step of justifying why they did or didn't, did not use the suggestions?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I think that there's two parts to that question. So the first part is that the applicant is agreeing to go by the green building code and get that certification. So they are providing some kind of sustainability measures in that way. I think the other part of that question is for the items such as geothermal. And that was a request from our public work staff to essentially understand what it would take to make that feasible to connect to geothermal for more projects in the future, if it's not feasible for this project in particular.
So what I'm hearing is it's an opportunity for basically a focus group. Like if you're not doing this, why aren't you? And then that helps us improve the city systems.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Clegg.
So there's 16 units there today. Where if we follow the recommendation and add these two units, there's 15. Why two and not three?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, so that's something that can be discussed here tonight as well. Two is our suggestion, as that would basically get us closer to that one-to-one replacement, which was spoken about at the last meeting, but also to provide some different types of affordability.
Okay. And then, so then the 60% rather than 100% that the rest of MAR is to provide another level of affordability as well.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, that's correct.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right. Thank you, Jesse. Now we're going to hear from the applicant Pivot North Architecture. Welcome.
Good evening. Does it work on this, Jesse?
Yes.
Forward and backwards. Okay, appreciate it. Dean Pepe, 119 Shoreline Drive, Boise, Idaho, 83702. Madam Mayor, step-in mayor. I know the mayor is, is dealing with similar issues that I am, as I hobbled up here. Councilmembers, I appreciate the opportunity to come up again and speak to you about this project. Before I get started, I, I just want to commend and thank all of you for what you do with this community. My dad spent eight years on a city council, and I spent a lot of time hearing about how he commiserated, how he had to think about what's best for the community. How do we move forward to be successful? And how we move forward in many different directions for what's best for, what's the future, which you just talked about, you know, 10, 20, 50 years down the road. So again, thank you, thank you very much for your time spent up here. I'm happy to run through what you guys have seen in the project before, on the last time that we're up here presenting. But I think it's important to really understand what we're talking about here today in regards to the affordability covenants, in regards to the development agreement or adjustments in the development agreement, and what's associated with that in regards to what CCDC is providing in the project. So with that said, really the decision comes down to, is the city council going to, in addition to having supported what's already gone through, design review, planning and zoning in the CCDC board, is city council ready to support the 15 units that were prescribed in the original development agreement? Or not? If not, as we discussed when we were up here before, the owner of the property will hold until rezon is completed and develop the project at that time. Ultimately, losing the opportunity to include these affordable units. So the additional units that have been added to the current development agreement have not been reviewed and/or approved by the development team or the owner of the property. And we're not in agreement with the current development agreement that's currently in front of you. So again, it comes down to, does this elected body support the additional units that we've agreed to and spent multiple months with city staff in a communication with them and CCDC to provide these additional units? Or do we take a pause and wait for the rezon to be completed and then develop it at that such time? I want to make sure that we all understand what was in the reconsideration and the actual quotes that came out in that reconsideration. We left that meeting understanding that we needed to work with CCDC to get their approval. The conversation with CCDC has actually started back in July of 2022 with staff and city staff to make sure that we were taking the right steps to include and communicate information about the project and how we can make that for the betterment of the community. We left the meeting for reconsideration, understanding that we need to get board approval. We need to go back to the board approval and get their approval.
Madam Mayor, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I want to ask a question while this is up. Didn't, my recollection is you told us during that meeting that the agreement with CCDC was not final, but that you were working on it and you were trying to get there. Is that, is that right?
Our communication with CCDC about what could be included in the project had started in July. We were told, and I'll get into it in a second, the timeline associated to get to the CCD board, our understanding at that point, needed design review approval. We couldn't get design review approval without zoning approval, which includes this body's approval.
I'm just digging at new information. Like my recollection is that you told us all this, that you, you didn't come here and say, CCDC has approved this. You came here and said, we're working with CCDC. We hope to get this approved in the first meeting. So what I'm asking about is like whether this slide contains new information, frankly.
Uh, this slide does include new information. You're correct. We worked with CCDC, continue to work with CCDC, but because of the timeline, we couldn't engage to the board level to get their support.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's fine. Happy to have that engagement. I really appreciate that. So additionally, this, this just notes that we started the engagement back in July, both with city staff and CCDC staff, to talk about what's needed to make it sure we could get to the board decision process. Ultimately, as I noted before, we had to work through multiple steps with the city before we could actually do a full submission to CCDC. This is the original timeline that we presented to you in our last meeting. Ultimately, it says, hey, the intent of this project is move forward to meet these goals, which were very tight, so that we could complete the project in a certain amount of times before the district closed. Ultimately, if we're unable to meet the timeline before the district closed, then we don't receive the support from CCDC and the funding from CCDC that would support the 13 units that we've been discussing. So again, the timeline, very important in regards to why we went through the process. Instead of the owners of the property making the decision to just hold, wait for rezon and develop the proposed project that's been approved by design review and supported by PNZ. We needed the additional support, the funding support from CCDC to help support the 13 units that we agreed to in the original development agreement. To do that, we needed PNZ approval, your group's approval, then design review approval, before we could engage to the board level of CCDC. With that said, after reconsideration, we were contacted by CCDC to make our submission prior to design review approval, which is outside of what we understood to be the normal timeline to get to an approval process with CCDC and start discussing a development agreement with them, or a Type 1 or Type 4, or 2 or 3 agreement with them of how that would support financially to the project. Ultimately, we were successful working with CCDC staff very diligently and very quickly to get a submission into them and received approval from the board on March 13th. So again, ultimately, this comes down to a tough decision. What you guys need to decide is representatives of this community and what's best to move forward with. One, you can approve what's already been approved at the last meeting in the current, in the development agreement, which we have approved and we have worked with on the development and ownership side, which would allow for the support of 13 units to be developed into the project and allows to engage with CCDC in a development, in an, in an agreement. Or you can move forward with what the staff has presented to you as a new development agreement that we just only received last week, that we are not in approval with, that we do not support. And ultimately, would stop the process to move forward and remove our ability.
Madam Mayor, quick question. You're, the new development agreement being the two additional units, is that what you're referring to?
That in the other context within that development agreement, correct. The whole new development agreement that we received last week. We haven't had time to digest or even engage city staff on the issues we have. We had a development agreement that we approved in hand, that this group approved to move forward with, that we are ready to move forward with at this point.
Um, timeout real quick. Mr. Pepe, I'm going to ask you, when you're addressed by a council member, that you then address the mayor and then the council member. It just kind of maintains a level of decorum that I'm sure that your father would appreciate.
Appreciate. He would. He would very much so. And thank you for the reminder. Sorry about that. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you so much. So again, the other option would be then to proceed with what's currently in front of you and recommended by staff, which would ultimately stop the project, and we would go into a holding pattern until the new zoning is in place. At such time, we will proceed with already what's been entitled by design review and proceed to develop the project without the conditions associated with the development agreement. I'm happy to then dive into what you guys have seen before in the context of the timing, in the context of what it looks like, and how it's being supported, and meets the city's goals for more housing. But that's already gone through multiple levels within the city. So with that, I will pause if there's any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Bajin.
My recollection of the prior meeting was I, I can't speak to how other people made their decisions, but what I came down to was you're going to be able to do this as a matter of right without any affordable units in short order, at the end of the year. You were working with CCDC to try to finalize an agreement that would allow you to provide affordable units, and that's what you'd come with. You hadn't finalized that with CCDC, but you were working on that, and you hoped to be able to do that. And so we approved it with conditions that made that possible, should you be able to get there with CCDC. Because one way or the other, this was going to be approved with or without the affordable units, depending on whether we approved it in that meeting, or whether we approved it as a matter of right under the new zoning code. My question is, it's not a, it's not a personal question because it's a business, but are you carrying loans and interest expense such that the project will be much more expensive if you wait until the end of the year? Because then that corresponds to how affordable the units are, once you're able to bring them to market. And so it's by waiting, are we not only losing on the affordable units you're trying to do now, but are we then also making the rest of the units even more unaffordable?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, great question. Currently, the land is held in, in an ownership that we are representing just for development purposes. They are not, they're weighing what happens tonight in regards to how they move forward, and it hasn't, it is not come to conversation in regards to, is there additional cost impacts? So I don't believe that's a hindrance of, of it happening in the future. It, it just hasn't been part of conversation.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Other questions for the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Clegg.
Thank you. My one only other question. There's also a request to include an easement for the storm drainage and sidewalk on 11th Street. Are you in agreement with that addition?
Yeah, that's actually, sorry, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, yes. There is no concern. We've actually had great conversations, and we continue to work with ultimately CCDC in requiring that. The intent is hopefully as part of this development, we find a better solution for that than what's currently provided in that easement.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilpro, Tim Hallie-Burton.
Thank you. So sort of a related question there. I'm trying to figure out what it is in the new development agreement that you're opposed to. And as I'm kind of looking through here, I see, I see a couple of different things highlighted in red. I see the easement that you just addressed with Councilmember Clegg, which it seems that you're on board with. I hear the two additional affordable units that you're not on board with.
Correct.
Um, can you outline the other things in the new development agreement that you're opposed to?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Ultimately, we need to work with legal staff, and we haven't been able to do that because we just received this document. But in regards to business terms, and those two additional affordable units makes it non-feasible, non-financially viable for a project. Also, the context of removing any information in regards to CCDC approval would need to remain in the agreement that's been removed from the agreement because we do not currently have an agreement with CCDC. We have an approval to engage them to get into an agreement with CCDC. So until we know that that agreement facilitates success to the project, we're unable to go into a development agreement that would be tied to the property.
Madam Mayor, follow-up there. So one of the things that you're opposed to is the actual crossing out of that affordability covenant that's in the DA.
I would leave it in if it ultimately allows, sorry, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I would ultimately leave it in if it provides for us the ability to work with CCDC to provide what's going to be in that agreement, because that's not implicit yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. We're going to let you have a seat for now.
Right, thanks.
Is the downtown Boise Neighborhood Association here? All right. I don't see anyone. And are there any members of the public who are wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Are there further questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, I do have one person online who'd like to speak.
Oh, we have somebody online. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Stephen Leeb. I live at 672 South Ash Street, one of the apartment units that will be torn down to build this apartment building. I want to start by saying thank you for letting me talk, Madam Mayor and the councilmembers. My biggest point here is that last time, when, when I spoke, I spoke about, you know, the 13 units being at 100% AMI, and that is roughly $1,531 per month. Currently, I'm paying $1,130 a month for a two-bedroom, one-bath. Currently, I'm paying eleven hundred and thirty dollars a month for a two-bedroom, one bath. That fifteen hundred and thirty-one dollars does not include parking, utilities and a bunch of other services. So my biggest concern is that that hundred percent, you know, AMI is not actually affordable. Um, I appreciate the two units from, for our path home being at sixty percent AMI for, uh, the 15 years, but I'm, I'm kind of confused also why that would be for only 15 years. Um, I'm assuming after 15 years, the, the apartments would be very profitable or profitable. And, and I would hope that these units could last longer than, you know, just that 15-year mark. Um, last time I had spoke and I asked for 16 units provided at sixty percent AMI to better match the current demographic and rent of our apartments. And although this 130-unit apartment may provide more housing, it's not necessarily providing more affordable housing units. And this is going to result in pushing out individuals and families who cannot afford these units, further gentrifying the area and also potentially increasing the city's current homelessness issues that we are already facing as a community. So I just want you guys to take a pause, think about the long-term impacts of housing in Boise. And, uh, yeah, that's, I guess that's really it. Let's take a pause. Let's think about the long-term effects. And let's choose builders who, who are gonna support affordable housing here um, and, and not push out people who, who may not be able to afford these units. Thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor, I've got a question.
Mr. Lee, we have a question for you if you're still available for that.
I am.
Councilmember Hallie-Burton.
Hey, you may have said this and I missed it. Um, did you say that you testified at the last meeting as well?
I did, yes. I testified at the last meeting.
Perfect. Yeah, I, I thought you had it. I, I just want to say thanks for continuing to show up and testify. It's, it's important to stay involved with these discussions and it's appreciated both times.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lieb? Excellent. Um, are there any questions for staff before we have the applicant wrap it up?
Madam Mayor, I actually wonder if I could ask a question of, uh, CCDC staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, Doug Woodruff here, representing CCDC.
Thank you for, um, being willing to answer if you can. Uh, the letter from CCDC requests that we do remove the affordability covenant, believing that it will unduly restrict you. I think as I heard the developer speak, it actually opens the door to the possibility of those additional two units if they work somehow without actually requiring them. Can you, um, maybe enlighten me whether we should or should not remove that affordability piece from the development agreement?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, I'll, I'll give it a shot. Yeah, for sure. As it stands in the development agreement that you considered on February 14th, the workforce housing units, 13 units were wholly contingent upon CCDC's ability to uh, partner with, uh, to chase mixes, uh, on this project. CCDC is, um, the River Myrtle District is one of our active districts and it sunsets several months after this project is contemplated to be incomplete. Development can be unpredictable and there is confidence on our end that this is an achievable project, but there is some risk there that if the project did not complete within the district's timeframe, CCDC wouldn't have the ability to reimburse upon those obligations. And so I, I think I share that with you here today to just illuminate that fact in that if the city is considering a development agreement on the basis of CCDC's performance and there is a bit of risk there on whether this all comes together. It, um, I, I think you all should just be aware of that in, in your considerations.
Follow up if I might. So Doug, I think what I'm hearing you say is that with that clause in the development agreement, if it were not to come together, then there'd have to be a modification of the development agreement at the end in order to actually issue an occupancy permit. Um, and in the meantime, it might, um, make, might complicate getting to that end date in a way that, that might prevent it from happening. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg. To say it more simply, if this didn't come today, if you were to consider a development agreement included those 13 units and we weren't able to get it completed within the district's timeframe, CCDC wouldn't be able to participate. And this development agreement is contingent upon that. So a decision made today on that could later not, uh, not be seen through. And so I think just being aware of that in, in the decision is, is something to be thinking about and is part of the reason why CCDC has requested that this information or this section be removed from the development agreement. Our agency has worked closely with, uh, the applicant as, as they've presented tonight and has dedicated it. I think, uh, we're all represent that the agency and, and its board, um, expressed support for the project and we're, you know, we're here to find a way to see it move forward if possible.
One last follow-up if I could. If we remove it, um, what's to prevent the applicant from simply not doing the agreement with you other than that they would lose whatever funding you would provide for them?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, yeah, that is correct. Um, our designation, uh, the action taken by our board in March, designated 1.1 million dollars of assistance upon completion of the project in exchange for the 13 workforce housing units. That 1.1 million dollars is to fund public infrastructure, utility relocations and streetscapes. So the developer would be facing a decision of not receiving assistance with, with public infrastructure if they chose not to move forward with the workforce housing.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff or for Doug? Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, hearing none, would the applicant like to wrap this up?
Yes, uh, council members, mayor, appreciate again the time and ability. I think I want to make clear a couple of things. Doug pointed out some very important, uh, items associated with what we're asking for in regards to the original development agreement. It's a funding structure at the end of the day to help support the units that were prescribed in the original development agreement. Without the funding structure, the, the project isn't viable, uh, to support those units. Um, and ultimately that's what we came for a month ago. And said, if we were able to be successful getting the funding structure, we've successfully moved forward and worked, worked with CCDC to put an agreement together to build that. Uh, we've had a very good relationship with the city and CCDC on both low-income workforce and market rate apartments. And we're hoping to include this in that, uh, portfolio of work. So, so ultimately, again, as I heard many years growing up, you guys are, are shoulder with a tough decision. Hopefully that decision, uh, is supportive of moving a development agreement together allows us to work with CCDC to build a great project that we're excited to bring to the market. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
A question for staff before you close.
Absolutely.
So try to stay with me and if you can, that's fine too. Say that we, um, leave the development agreement, um, in place for the affordable units, the way that it's written, um, or the way that we approved last time around. The project doesn't get completed during the time and they lose that funding. Do we know at, at that point where that puts the city in holding somebody accountable to keeping that affordable units in place when the funding's gone away? So I'm trying to figure out like what happens if we just leave it in there and for some reason things don't work out and they don't, the, uh, funding from CCDC.
Uh, Madam Mayor, council members, the way it was written in the, um, development agreement that was presented on the 14th of February, um, there is a clause in there that would allow them to move forward. However, again, in conversations with CCDC since that point in time, it has come to the attention of both agencies that it could be much cleaner to just separate those two agreements and have CCDC have their affordability aspect with the applicant, um, as they are providing that funding. And then the city understands that that is what's on the table for the applicant.
Thank you for a great answer.
Thank you. Now I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And what's the will of the council?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to deny the request for reconsideration in CAR 2234.
Second, that leaves the agreement as is. Is that what you're saying?
It, it leaves our decision from February 14th as it is.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The, the reason this is here is because there was new information, uh, that needed to be considered. Uh, I don't think the information was new. I think we knew it. So setting that aside, we're right back where we were. We talked about this for a really long time. We went through the affordability. We went through the pros and cons of CCDC. We went through the lived experience of all the residents there. We worked really hard and achieved a final result. Nothing has changed except that we've put this off for another month and a half. We need to stick with the decision that we've already made. Uh, we, we can't be waiting back into these things over and over and over again. We need to allow the developer to move forward and we need to move forward with our own items of business.
Other comments?
I agree with that assessment. My one question is the easement is in red, but it's not underlined. So I'm not clear if it's in the existing development agreement or if needs to be added.
Uh, Madam Mayor, council members, that would need to be added, um, if that was, uh, if you're approving the development agreement that was on the table for the 14th, that was not in that agreement.
Okay, so my request to the maker of the motion is even in denying it, I believe we, can we add the, the, the condition for the easement? And I hadn't thought about that when I seconded.
Madam Mayor. Uh, my suggestion would be it seemed like the developer was in agreement with that. It wasn't a problem. Modify the development agreement on consent, move forward and get it done.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a clarifying question for the maker. So these are always really tricky because we've got, um, reconsideration. So what I hear you saying, Councilmember Bajin, is that you're denying the reconsideration because we've already approved that in February without all the additional conditions that were, well, the handful of different conditions that were brought up today because in your mind there isn't anything substantial enough to grant a reconsideration.
Yeah, I would say that we heard this and we made a decision. There was a request to reconsider that decision. I see no basis to reconsider it, so we let our prior decision stand.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? I just wanted to note before we, um, before we vote on this item that it was brought up a couple of times that if we just wait until the modern zoning code takes effect, that we can do whatever we want. One of the things we're trying to build into the modern zoning code is that when you demolish existing affordable housing, that's replaced one-to-one. So while the applicant cannot come back up and I get my soapbox for a minute, um, that's going to be our intention as we go forward is that existing affordable housing is preserved even when land is redeveloped. And so we're going to work really hard toward getting there. All right, without any further discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie-Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we're going to take a 10-minute break before we take up our last item of business, PUD 22-63. We'll be back in 10. All right, everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started on the next item. PUD 22-63. If everyone can wrap up their conversations and take a seat, that would be very much appreciated. All right, our, um, staff presenter on this item is Sabrina Mortensen. Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of PUD 22-63. In 2019, council approved the prominent subdivision along with a rezone of 38.4 acres to R1 CDA and a PUD for a total of 226 dwelling units. A condition of the original approval required the applicant to obtain specific PUD approval for the multifamily apartments within the project, which is the item before you this evening. On February 6th, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard a request for a PUD comprised of 96 multifamily units on 6.22 acres located at 8133 Bogart Lane in an R1 CDA zone. Following a public hearing and deliberations, the commission determined that the application complied with the requirements of the comprehensive plan, development code and development agreement and approved the PUD. On February 15th, the Northwest Neighborhood Association appealed the commission's decision based on the ground shown on this slide. The appeal centers on concerns regarding a planned pathway along the spoil banks canal to the south of the project site. The appall asserts that the commission erred in its interpretation of the scope of the application and failed to evaluate the project's compliance with the entirety of the comprehensive plan, specifically regarding pathway-related policies of the adopted Northwest Neighborhood Plan and Boise Pathways Master Plan. However, the condition of the development agreement, which required the current application clearly states that the scope of the PUD is limited to the multifamily apartments within Phase 3 of the prominent subdivision. As only conceptual plans for the apartments were provided with the original applications in 2019, the current application was intended to provide the commission with an opportunity to review detailed plans for the apartments to ensure compliance with the PUD findings and the provisions of the development agreement. The pathway referenced by the appall and their appeal is outside the scope of the current application and is located over 47 feet away from the parcel that will contain the multifamily apartments. However, the pathway was proposed and approved through the original applications in 2019 and will be constructed by the developers as part of the process of finalizing the subdivision. The proposed pathway location and width is consistent with the guidelines of the Pathways Master Plan and council will have another opportunity to review the pathway design in detail as part of a future final plot application. As outlined in your packets, the appallant has not provided any evidence to demonstrate that the commission erred in its decision to approve the PUD for the multifamily apartments. Therefore, the planning team recommends that council deny the appeal and uphold the commission's approval of PUD 22-63. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sabrina. Any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Bajin.
One quick question, Sabrina. Um, and you may not know the answer because 2019 was a while ago. But, uh, the, there were conceptual plans provided back in 2019 and then much closer to final detail plans provided relatively recently. And the question is, like way back at what was being approved in 2019, were conceptual plans even required at all?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bajin. Typically, we do require that, um, as part of the supplemental checklist, just to get an idea of what we're actually approving. Um, and then the condition required them to come back with specific plans to show exactly what would be constructed on the site.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Clegg.
Thank you. There's a fair amount of conversation about the, um, pathway along the canal bank, uh, in, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and in the appeal. As I look at that, there's really not been any kind of process to determine what that uh, pathway might look like. How it will best serve the neighborhood. Should it be paved? Should it be gravel? So it can, uh, provide for equestrians, those kinds of things. I didn't see any discussion about perhaps asking for a planning process to begin now so that when they get to the phase where the path would be built, we'd have a good understanding of what that pathway might look like. So that's something that we could require as part of, uh, this application.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, the developer for the overall subdivision is currently in the process of finalizing those designs.
Could you speak up just a little? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, the applicant for the overall subdivision is currently in the process of finalizing those plans in preparation for the final plot application. Um, so we would see those more detailed plans with the final plot application in the future. So we would see those more detailed plans with the final plot application in the future. From what we've seen currently, the proposed path would have a minimum width of ten feet and would be paved with landscape buffers between it and the adjacent street as well as between it and the pathway or the canal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? All right, thank you, Sabrina. All right, so the run of show here is that we're going to hear from the appellant, which is the Northwest Neighborhood Association, I believe, represented tonight by Richard Llewellyn. We're then going to hear from the applicant. Then the Neighborhood Association. We'll hear from the public and those are limited to two parties of record. So folks who have provided input on this before, I have a list of who all of those folks are. And then we'll have a rebuttal by the applicant and then a rebuttal by the appellant. We're going to keep our commentary respectful and on topic. And we're going to be respectful in the audience as well, is my request. So Northwest Neighborhood Association or whoever's representing as the appellant. You're up.
Madam Mayor, before Richard starts, I meant to note one thing. In the staff report, it references Fire Station sixteen rather than Fire Station thirteen. I just wanted to clarify that development will go forward after Fire Station thirteen is underway.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Richard.
Welcome, Madam Mayor, council members. Richard Llewellyn, ninety-one seventy Hill Road. I am looking for the presentation up there. Okay, thank you. I will not proceed with the first request. I see that council member Clegg is here. We were concerned that there might just be a very few of you and so we had hoped that we would have a, a, a full seat, but good enough, we'll move forward. This is the Spoils Bank Canal or Eagle Drain. As it exists, well, as it existed a few years ago, this was a bird watching tour that our local bird watcher Gary Worthington gives occasionally, and this is one of the highlights of the trip. We see a lot of birds here. There's a list of birds in the appendix for what we submitted to planning and zoning. This is an open house for our neighborhood plan. The pink dots are proposed where people think pathway should go. The lower pink dots there about center are the Spill Banks, Spumix Canal pathway, proposed pathway. That was in two thousand nineteen. The blue is open, desired open space. This, this is all, this, this at least is in your packet, but I just wanted to point out that there's nothing new that we are springing on anybody here. The pathway was always a shared agreed amenity of this project. So both Jane Suggs, Leon Letson, Deborah Nelson, all discussed it multiple times in the project at the, well, throughout the project. I guess I'll just leave it at that. And it's described as, as a, you know, a peaceful nature trail. For instance, it's talked about as mitigating for some of the loss of open space and wildlife habitat. So it's not just a sidewalk, for example. Here is the master pathways plan. It is in the top ten priorities. On the right, it's shown there, that segment. On the left, just noting that there are many ways to make up a viable, good pathway. And that is something I hope that can be discussed at some point. So to step back a little bit now, neither of these two diagrams were in the project report that planning and zoning saw. To the left, the project overview revised is what was before city council in two thousand and nineteen, in which they based their October first decision on. As you can see, the phases are broadly blocked out. Phase one, phase two, and phase three. Phase three is everything to the, in the southeast part of the property. And note that it goes all the way. It encompasses the entire property and that property goes all the way to the south side of the Spoils Bank Canal. What you see on the right, the first time that that was ever seen by a member of the public that I'm aware of was during the planning zoning hearing, which is quite different. It shows phase two sneaking in underneath phase three. We did not have access to that, nor did the planning zoning commission until partway through the application hearing. Note, there wasn't just the map that showed phase three as being simple and contiguous. Phase three conditions here in the packet before planning zoning, zoning says, "Street improvements for the new public roadway extending from Bogart Lane to Hill Road Parkway shall include five-foot detached sidewalks and eight-foot landscape buffers." In other words, that road here is considered part of phase three and the sidewalks along the road are considered part of phase three. This is what it looks like today when I took a photo. The power line is new. That power line is, runs underground and then comes up there in that first power line. And that's more or less where we had always expected the pathway to go. So I'm going to step back here a little bit to the transcript of the discussion. And I really hope that you all have a chance to review that, refresh the conversation that we had, especially that the commissioners had during the hearing. I'm, I, I can't go over all of it, obviously, because of time. I've pulled out a few things. First of all, Commissioner Mooney asks, "What about this aerial map?" You know, we haven't seen it before. Is this part of the record now? He, he speaks to his confusion regarding the canal. Commissioner Schaefer, "Does anyone have a copy of this phase three site plan on the aerial? Or give us a sense of the width of that right of way that's south of this proposed development to the canal?" Again, that right of way, but I'm not sure if he's speaking to the canal easement or the power line easement or the right of way for the street. The applicant, I don't have anything that shows, sorry. I don't have anything that shows that, but phase three is to the property line. So I think that's really key here. To the applicant believes that phase three is what they say the property line. I believe that means their property. But the property of the entire project extends south across the canal and up to some of the people's properties here that are in the audience. So I think this speaks to the general confusion. So, and again, in phase three, according to the original phase three, that roadway is included, which is not the property line that the applicant believes. So Commissioner Mooney, I was trying to get some background for the decisions made back in two thousand and nineteen. And that's really what's going on here. It was a long time ago and we've kind of lost sight of the big picture. So staff asserts that this pathway is not part of phase three, which we, of course, disagree with. We think it is. Commissioner Frinfrock, "So how are the paths actually addressed in the development agreement? You said they were in phase one and phase two." So staff says that for phase one, there's a condition that reads pathway, pathways associated, sorry, pathways associated with this portion of the development shall be publicly accessible, et cetera. In other words, pathways are associated with portions of the development, with the larger properties that are part of phase one, phase two, and phase three. Note also that phase three is not spoken of here, but neither is the east-west pathway along the Spoils Bank Canal. So that's left out. So Commissioner Danley. Excuse me. I thought I drank a lot of water to avoid this, but. So he had, he expresses confusion. He wants to make sure he's getting it right. He, with the relationship between this new inserted map, what she calls the aerial, and the site plan. So he says there's some, a big chunk of ground that seems to be missing from this. The big picture is that the Spoils Bank Canal is definitely clearly in a different phase than what we have in front of us tonight, which is a CUP because of planned unit develop, development aspect. And this is where we really feel the fundamental error lies. Staff or planning and zoning was relying on the assertion that phase three is different from what city council approved. Commissioner Sted, "If we're only looking at phase, the property, the land that phase three is highlighted and it doesn't touch the canal in that aerial map that they saw." "I have concerns about the pathways as well, but it doesn't, based on what we're looking at tonight, it doesn't look like we have control over the land along the canal in tonight's project." She goes on to say, "So I'm sure we'll see a future project that will include what we need to know about the pathway space. And we can, at that point, add whichever conditions are appropriate to preserve the space around the canal." Now, this is where the hammer really hits the anvil in terms of harm and in terms of air and in terms of the repercussion of the air. There is never going to be a future project along here, along the, on this common lot. This common lot of Promin, of the Prominence Project, which was shown to be in phase three before city council in two thousand and nineteen. There will never be a future project in which they can weigh in on a path. And Commissioner Schaefer agrees. This is the, this is how the decision is being made here. Commissioner Mooney, again asserting that this aerial map that's been inserted, it's the first time they've seen it in the record. They didn't get a chance to review it until now. So that's why we're all confused. There is clear confusion expressed by multiple parties here. That's the challenge. And then we're talking about a future phase or a different phase of the project, again, in which they believe now that they can weigh in on this pathway. Well, it's not a future phase. It is phase two, which was approved in two thousand and nineteen. There is no new phase or new development application that will come before planning and zoning in which they can ensure that this pathway conforms to both what they believe it, it should conform to master pathways plan would have recommended, et cetera. So again, same, same thread. Commissioner Sted, "We will do what we can when the time comes to keep that in mind as we review the land being developed along the pathway there, along the proposed pathway." Again, this is the application. There will be no other application. So this is the air. Commissioner Danley, "Unfortunately, the map that is in front of us up here simply just was not included in our packet and that was the confusion I think all of us had. We worked through the process and I think we have the answers we need, but that's the air. They don't. That is not the correct phase three according to what city council showed or was shown and voted on and what we have shown you tonight." Commissioner Mooney, "Concerned that the site would not be large enough if phase three would have to contain the path." A lot of consternation. And here it really comes to this. Commissioner Schaefer, "When phase two does come around for this body to review, I think we'd like to see phase three boundaries included in that application so we have a clear picture of how all these pieces get put together." Okay, that's not going to happen. Phase two has already gone through approval in two thousand and nineteen. So that is the air again. Let me assure you, there's other opportunities as this development moves through the process. Well, that's just not going to be the case. In terms of right now, this is the conditional use permit. This is the time to ensure that phase three, as city council voted on phase three, fits with the larger plans and amenities that were always part of the prominence proposal. That I will maybe talk about later. So I apologize, I kind of had to run through this transcript kind of in somewhat hodgepodge fashion. That was more or less in order. I think it was entirely in order. But it's, I, I hope you can read it if you haven't, if you can take a moment to refresh yourselves. It's just very clear that overall, the entirety of what planning and zoning believed they were making their decision on was that they were going to see this another application here for another development or something else. Phase two come around before them in a, in a situation like a CUP or a PUD in which they could actually have the legal authority to ensure that this path is created here. So thank you all. Stand for any questions.
Thank you, Richard. Are there any questions for Richard?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, council pro temp, Hallie Burton.
Richard, it's good to see you.
Thanks. I did read through the transcript. I was expecting you to bring up that big fish that you didn't catch.
You, thank you for asking. You know, there's a few errors in the transcript because it was actually a crawdad and I'm not sure how that fish, I think maybe some of this artificial intelligence.
Yeah.
But inserted trout when it actually it was a crawdad.
Gotcha. I was going to ask you how you knew it was the biggest one if you didn't actually bring it into the shore, but I was joking around.
Good question.
So I agree with you that there was, there was certainly some confusion reading through the transcript. The way that I read it at the end, though, is that they got to the point where they realized where the confusion was and I've experienced that before on council where you kind of had to walk through a variety of different things until you got to the point where there was some clarity. And it seems to me that when they got to the end, that they found the clarity that that pathway is indeed planned and going to be put in, which I think we also heard from staff earlier tonight. So tell me if, if, if you read that differently, that at the end that they didn't get past that confusion and got to the point where they had arrived that like, yes, there was some confusion that we had earlier this evening, but now we've got it straight. That pathway is going in. We have confidence in that, both from staff and developer going forward. And so we know that that issue isn't related to this specific application.
Yeah, thank you. There's kind of two components to that. And the first again is, I believe that there, they did not arrive at the correct conclusion because they did never, they never saw the image on the left here.
Okay.
Because we had no reason to bring that forward. Ahead of time, we submitted our comments several weeks in advance. Make, well, to make sure they were getting the project report because we wanted to make sure that we weren't surprising anybody with anything. We based our comments on the image on the left because that was the image that was in the record. So there is that, which I will still maintain is an error. Now, if the applicant wishes to say that the sidewalk, for example, along this new road is the path, then they had an opportunity to say that before planning and zoning. I did note in the diagram that was shown here before you a moment ago by staff, staff noted that the sidewalk, there was a little thing that said planned path on that sidewalk. Now, planning and zoning should have been told, "This is the planned path, this sidewalk here." And then they could be evaluated, "Is that an adequate path? Does this meet the expectations? Does it meet the comprehensive plan, the Boise Masters Pathways Plan, Northwest Neighborhood Plan, et cetera, et cetera?" But they were not given that information and so they could not evaluate it rationally.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, just to, I think you probably answered this one in a yes, no. So I think that what you feel like happened is that planning and zoning still doesn't have an adequate idea of what that pathway is going to look like at the end of that. And you also believe that they will never have a chance to look at that again. That's what you're saying.
I don't believe they'll have a chance to look at that again in a situation in which they have the legal authority to make any substantial difference. to make any substantial differences. If phase three is now truncated to these new boundaries and developed as such, may or may not, we don't know is the problem. We don't know the size of the easement.
I got you.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you. Any other questions, Richard?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Clegg.
Um, Richard, the aerial map that is in the packet, um, with the blue and red and yellow. Does the phase two that is approved include a pathway along the southern, along the northern edge of the Spoils Bank Canal?
Not in my mind, it doesn't. Um, and that's always been an issue. We've always been asking, when is that pathway going to be addressed? And we always got the answer, it will be addressed, but sometime in the future.
Sometime in the future. And this is a question, I think, for staff at this point. The phase two that I assume is approved, because the blue showing on this map does not include a fair amount of the land that was originally approved. I'm, I know the land on the north side of Hill Road Parkway was preserved as open space. But what about the rest of the land on the south? What's happening to it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, um, what's shown as phase two and blue in that image in front of you is what we haven't received a final plot application for, but the developer has submitted utility plans to the Public Works Department for review, which is why those preliminary lot lines are showing on the map currently. Um, so that would be at this point, what we expect to see in phase two for a final plat. And then the remaining section of what was originally phase two would come back in a future final plat.
And does what we have, um, showing in phase two, in your mind, include a pathway on the Spoils Bank Canal?
Madam Mayor, um, Councilmember Clegg, yes, per the development agreement that is required in that section. And we would see that when the final plat was submitted for that phase.
But, but we haven't seen it yet. It's not in the current plan. Is that what you're saying? It's, we're waiting for final plat to see if it's there?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, it's in the preliminary plat that's recorded with the development agreement. The final plat would be required to comply with that preliminary plat. But no, we haven't received a final plat application at this time.
Okay, and when do we expect that?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, the applicant might have a more specific timeline. I would expect sometime this year.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Next up, we have the applicant, Jeffrey Bauer, or whoever else is here representing the applicant tonight.
Madam Mayor, Jeffrey Bauer is online.
Great. Thank you for joining us. Are you there? Jeff?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thanks for being here.
Great, thank you. And, and whoever's running the show, could I share my screen, please? Oh, that, now I have permission. Thank you. Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council, Jeff Bauer, six oh one, Wes Bannick and Boise here tonight on behalf of the applicant and landowner. Bear with me, I've, I've got a little cold, so I didn't want to come in, but I might, uh, I might be copping a little bit, so I apologize. Um, we did submit written comments in opposition to this appeal, um, showing that the commission did not commit any errors and that all of the PUD criteria have been properly analyzed in the commission's decision approving this project. We did fully agree with planning staff's analysis of the appeal in this case. We've gone through it page by page. We believe planning staff did a great job discussing each of the alleged errors and showing why those are not in fact errors. So we would agree with planning staff that this appeal should be denied. If, I'm happy to stand for any questions on those errors. Um, but I think I'm going to take a more high level approach tonight. Um, and, and talk big picture. So really, this application and this appeal can be boiled down to one issue. Will the prominence developer construct a pedestrian pathway on the north side of the Spoils Bank Canal? The answer to that question is unequivocally yes. Construction of this pathway is required as part of the underlying development agreement and the conditions of approval from the prominence project in 2019. The application before you tonight does not change or modify any of the underlying conditions imposed by the council when it approved prominence. The future pathway along the canal is not at issue in this application. As noted by planning staff, all of the prominence project is subject to an approved preliminary plat. That approved preliminary plat is displayed on this slide. This plat will guide all future development of the prominence project. The application at issue in this case relates to lot two, block two, as shown on the preliminary plat and highlighted in red on this slide. This is a 6.22 acre area on the southwest corner of Hill Road Parkway in Bogart. This figure shows the separation from the current project and the canal and future pathway planned along the canal. The canal center line is shown in blue and the future pathway is depicted in line just north of the blue line. Because the canal nor the future pathway are part of this application, the commission correctly determined this was not an appropriate time to further condition or require the construction of the pedestrian pathway along the canal. The appellant has provided many arguments about the errors resulting from the presentation of a phasing map presented by staff to the commission. First, as discussed by planning staff and detailed in our briefing, none of these alleged errors have any merit. The phasing plan presented by staff to the commission was purely illustrative to help orient the commission and to answer the questions from the commission. Second, and more importantly, the application approved by the commission and before the council tonight is very narrow. The sole purpose of this application is to permit a multifamily use on a discrete piece of property the council already determined would be used for multifamily residential. The commission's approval did not change any of the underlying approvals or phases. In fact, the commission's approval of this application included a site-specific condition requiring that all underlying conditions from the prominence project be continued to be complied with. Again, I just want to highlight that we're here on an application for a PUD for a use on the red area. And, and because we have kind of an unusual procedure here, I, I'm going to run through some of the questions from the council and respond to some of the appellant's, uh, initial comments. So Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bajin. Um, good question about the conceptual nature of this multifamily area. In 2019, this, um, project did not have conceptual plans that were approved for the multifamily. It was always agreed that that, um, planning process would occur in a second uh, CUP hearing. Uh, that's what this was. Uh, the council in 2019 did put some parameters on the multifamily use, though they said no more than 96 units and that it had to be, uh, two-story structures. Commissioner Hallie Burton, I, I believe that your statement was spot on as to the evolution before the commission. And I think the appellant, you know, was cherry picking some questions to make it sound like there was lingering confusion. But ultimately, we believe that the PNZ, you know, with some handholding from staff, uh, ultimately figured out where this project was located. Um, and came to the conclusion that the pathway was offsite and already required by the underlying approvals. And I think I'd point you to one specific quote from the chairman that sort of wrapped up the deliberations and he says, quote, "We were able to get assurances from staff that the space is there within the pre-plat and the previous approvals and that the pathway will certainly be a reality and will happen." And so just turning to some of the comments, um, from the applicant. Um, first, as it relates to the power line, uh, that was recently installed along the canal, want to highlight that this is a temporary facility. Uh, it's, it's power to an irrigation facility on the, on the west side of our property that will be removed uh, as phase two is developed and power is undergrounded to that irrigation pump, so that, that power line will be removed. I, I'm struggling with the applicants, I'm sorry, with the appellant's arguments here because they keep talking about this confusion about the pathway. And, and really, I think the confusion is, is up there unmaking. They're either ignoring the facts or, or they're just refusing to accept them. Staff purely presented this application below and, and the appellant wouldn't concede that we were not contiguous to the canal. And I think this image really highlights that. There will be a future final plat application submitted that will provide construction drawings and plans for this pathway. And, and, um, Councilmember Clegg, we do anticipate filing that final plat application in, in this, um, in this calendar year. So we would expect that the bulk of the pathway will be constructed with phase two uh, in this calendar year. And it will be constructed, um, in accordance with the preliminary plat approval. You can see the, the pathway coming off of Bogart, traveling to the west and then intersecting with this, uh, more substantial, uh, pedestrian facility that also doubles for, um, a fire, a fire safety connection as well. With that, I, I'm not going to belabor the point. Um, we believe that PNZ did not commit error. Um, this isn't an application that involves the pathway or, or is adjacent to the pathway. Um, because the commission didn't err, we would ask you to deny this appeal and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Clegg.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Jeff. So, um, it would seem like you could certainly understand why there would be confusion when the original conceptual plan showed that this portion of the pathway and not the more substantial pedestrian way to the west uh, would be part of phase three and not part of phase two. And certainly, um, understanding that should have happened when phase two came through as a preliminary plat. Um, and as I'm understanding, and I'll ask the appellant when they get a chance to rebut, uh, if they brought it up then or not. Um, so I, I think what I'm hearing you tell me is that the preliminary plat for phase two is, uh, in and that design on the final plat is underway and you expect to bring that forward soon and begin construction in this calendar year. Um, am I hearing you correctly?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, that's correct. And, and I would only add one small nuance to that, which is, um, you know, this application again is a, is a PUD for a multifamily use on a specific piece of property. It is not a, an application for, you know, quote unquote, phase three. A, a, and just to kind of highlight that, that there, while I agree during the 2019 prominence project, we, we did talk about conceptual phasing of this project. There is not a phasing plan that's approved or required for this project. Um, like any other preliminary plat, the, the developers taking down these phases in an order that makes sense for the market and based on infrastructure and, and access requirements.
Okay, thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, I, actually, I have another question that didn't come up in the other discussion, but, uh, is follow-up for uh, some of the conditions in the original plat. And that is, uh, the edible plants. And while they're certainly noted on here, as I look at the landscaping plan, they're awfully sparse. And I don't see any of those, um, shown on the tree schedule. I show a crab apple, but not a real edible, uh, tree. And I wonder if you could, uh, illuminate why you made those choices.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, you're, you caught me a little off guard with that question because it hasn't been an issue. But I do know that, um, I'm trying to find the right page in your packet. There, there are significant areas on the west side of the property that are, um, that are reserved in our site plan for, um, uh, edible plants. And specifically, the, the idea that there would be an orchard concept. Um, I'm not sure what the specific plant species that were called out are. I, I could probably find that or, or maybe planning staff knows. Um, I'll get to that in my second rebuttal. How about that?
Well, I'll just note that, uh, we discussed it tonight and as the final plat comes forward, I'll expect you and staff to make sure and ensure that those are there.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, I want to make sure I understand, you're, are you speaking of the, of the property that's subject to this application or the frontage?
Yes, not the final plat that you'll be bringing forward for phase two, but when you do bring final plat forward for this, I will expect staff and you to ensure that the edible plants are there sufficient numbers and that some of those are in fact, um, trees and orchard.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Madam Mayor, I do have one question for the applicant, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bajin.
Mr. Bauer, could you refresh us on, my understanding is we're here on the narrow conditional use appeal of the multifamily units. That's really it. Um, and can you, you refresh us on why the multifamily units were subject to a conditional use requirement in the first place?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bajin. Well, number one, uh, we are zoned R1C in this case and multifamily is a conditional use in that zone. So that's the easy answer. The, the longer background answer is that at the time this project came before the council in 2019, um, due to fire safety issues, um, other infrastructure issues, it, it, the, the density proposed for this portion of the project wasn't yet viable. And you see that in the conditions of approval that that require the fire station to be under construction before we can start construction. And so that's why we're still, um, that, that's why this portion of the project didn't get approved in 2019. Um, and why we're going through a, a CUP or PUD today.
Thank you. And a, a quick follow-up. So like, that was my understanding. Um, and in my mind, that means the heart of our inquiry should be directed towards those issues. In other words, the issues that held this up from being approved uh, back in 2019, the infrastructure, the fire access, the ability to support the density, that those are the heart of the issues on this conditional use permit. Um, but maybe I'm wrong and maybe there's something either in the record or in the prior discussion in 2019 that I'm overlooking.
Madam Mayor, um, Councilmember Bajin, couldn't agree more. I think we've tried to focus our briefing on the PUD approval criteria and that the council, I'm sorry, the commission carefully evaluated those and, and issued a well-reasoned decision and found that, um, all of the underlying conditions from prominence would still need to be complied with. And so I agree, I, I believe we have tried to, to deflect this appeal in that direction. And I believe that all of the appropriate criteria have been satisfied. And again, those underlying conditions are still in place as, as a protection.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the Neighborhood Association. Is someone here to, um, represent Northwest Neighborhood Association? Welcome back, Richard.
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. How much time do I have for this rebuttal, assuming this is a rebuttal?
This is not rebuttal.
Okay.
We have not yet opened the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, so this is you speaking as the Neighborhood Association in your testimony.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, well, I will just respond to a few of the comments we just heard, which I believe is germane to the entire project. Um, first of all, most importantly, you were just entirely misled. Um, first of all, most importantly, you were just entirely misled. There is no development agreement. Specifying. The pathway along the spoils bank canal. It's an easy mistake to make because there was a development agreement. To specify that lateral number thirty four. Which runs north, south, and is on the west side. Of the project remain open. And that there is a pathway along that. That was a development agreement. This, what we are talking about, this pathway that goes through the phase three property. Is not. Called for in a development agreement. So this is the chance to do it. And we're talking about, we're trying to narrow. So. Make this such a tiny project. And yet we're talking about multifamily on R one C. And are are we setting a precedent here in which we are saying? We can't have. A pathway associated with. An apartment complex on R one C because. Um, that would be too broadly um considering a C U P for an apartment complex. I don't think so. We do it on State Street all the time, fortunately, or else we wouldn't have a chance. Of getting that multimodal path along State Street. We haven't always been consistent, but we have moved that way and planning zoning and this council. Consistently at this point. Require that pathways adjacent to multifamily. Um, apartment complexes. Um, those pathways are required. It's part of the C U P. As part of mitigating the impact, as part of making the project work. And having this level of density here. Requires an extra effort. When you add. You know, ninety six apartment units in R one C, we need to go the extra step, especially we need to go to the extra step. When it's called for in multiple planning documents, this pathway. So you know, we've been hearing now that it's the sidewalk that is the. Multi, well, the pathway that's called for in as one of the top ten priority pathways. In the Boise Master Pathways Plan. Planning and zoning did not have the opportunity. To. Vet. Whether that was an adequate. Pathway, or as. Councilmember Clegg brought up, what kind of surface it might have? Might it be appropriate for equestrians? How would it interact with? Wildlife habitat along the. Spoils Bank Canal. All of these are part of designing a good pathway, right? That's just. Been ignored now. The applicant could have said, no, we want. You to consider the sidewalk, as we're hearing now. To be part of. The pathway that's called for. So. It is not overly broadly expanding the. Power that the city has. For a conditional use permit. For multifamily to discuss a. A pathway that is on the larger applicant property. We're not talking offsite here. We keep hearing this offsite. I showed you. At one point already, could I have my? Original.
Richard, I'm just gonna, I'm. If you can pause his time real quick. I think that we've established that the pathway is not part of this parcel in this application. Is the rest of your testimony related to the pathway? Because I feel like we've already resolved that issue.
Um, so are you?
And I'm trying to keep stuff on topic to this application in this parcel.
Okay, well, let me just, if if you could show me that, because I that's this is germane. So again. Phase three is depicted. And. This aerial map you see on the right was not. Councilmember Clegg. It is in the packet now for the appeal, but it was not before planning and zoning. Phase three conditions. Street improvements for the new public roadway extending from Bogart Lane to Hill Road Parkway shall include five foot detached sidewalks. All right, so this does have what they are now calling the pathway. In this application in phase three. And now they're saying it's not there. So we're either. If if. Counsel is directing me not to speak on the pathway.
Madam Mayor, I don't think the council is directing you to say anything, and you should exercise your right to argue your appeal as vigorously as you want. Certainly not shutting you down, um, but I think she is indicating what we're interested in in an effort to be helpful to you.
Thank you. Very good. So then to answer your question, if it was a question. Uh, count, Madam Mayor. The larger, we're really trying to get at the larger. Context here of the entire project. This is. One aspect of a larger pro- um, project. Part of what we brought up in the in the plan zoning commission hearing as well. Was the fact that the development agreement. For the pathway that is required. Is already being. Not really followed, certainly not followed in spirit. And that can be seen. On my last. Slide here. So this is the. Irrigation number thirty four. This is. Required in the development agreement to remain open as much as possible. And. Connect with the pathway. Along the canal. Um, today. It might be open for a few yards. I couldn't walk and see. Because it's posted private property now, but the point being. We're losing the integrity of this. Larger application. Um, and we're doing so because we're seeing these as piecemeal. Um, if indeed this entire. Irrigation lateral number thirty four is going to be buried now. On the in. On the applicant property, on the prominence property. Then we do need to. Think about how that affects. The pathways, the other pathways that were approved or discussed, but not part of the development agreement. And that is. Um, germane to this phase three. So. Again, we're losing the integrity of the project. And this is the time to, just like on State Street or anywhere else where we've. Put a pathway into the master's plan. This is the time to address it. So. Um, this is the first time we've heard that the power line is temporary. We asked city staff. Earlier, and we were told, no, it wasn't temporary. That is, and there is a power line easement that goes through there, and it will be permanent. So if it's going to be temporary. That could be a potential place for a pathway. Again, planning and zoning should have had the opportunity. To vet that and see if that actually works, and then perhaps get an agreement that that will be a temporary power line. You know, we do have a lot of time here. Um. We have until the sign out at the east and in on Bogart Lane now says twenty twenty four for the fire station. So. It's all, it's reasonable to take the time to do this right. Let's see. So again, I think the most critical thing is. We just heard. From. App- applicant representative that the pathway in question here is in the develop in a development agreement. It is not. It is not. It is not. Planning and zoning commission made their decision believing. That there was some other mechanism that they were going to be able to use. To ensure that the pathway was created. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, we're going to go to. Public testimony. We have several people signed up in person. And we may have some people online as well. So if you are online and you're planning to speak on this item. Please raise your hand on Zoom so that our. Clerk is aware of that. Um, but right now we're going to start. With people in order that they signed up, and the first party of record. Who has also signed up to testify is Kathy Buchanan. And then on deck, we will have. Chris Mannion. Hi, Kathy.
Hi, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Kathy Buchanan. I live at seventy five sixty five North Misty Cove Avenue, which is right close to this project. Um, I bought property in the neighborhood at the end of twenty eighteen for its proximity to foothills, hiking trails. And I walk in the area of the spoils bank canal daily. Which draws wildlife to it. I wonder with all this development that's coming, if we'll see wild turkeys or other birds uh once phase two and three of the project are complete. But the pathway will at least provide a buffer which. Will hopefully allow them to continue to utilize the area and for the neighbors to enjoy them. It sounds to me like you've taken the pathway as an issue for this project off the table, so I I don't want to spend a lot of time. On that, if that's the case, but I just, I did take a look at the pathways plan, and there were some statements in there that. Um, are. Important, I think, um. And maybe just a refresher for some, but. It states the plan's implementation should be, the plan and its implementation should be informed and influenced by members of the community. The plan should establish criteria for prioritizing future investment. And should serve as a tool enables the city to make quality decisions when opportunities arise. And thirdly, canal corridor, canal corridors represent some of the only remaining open space quarters to provide long continuous connection opportunities. So I think as Mister Lillen's pointed out, this is really important to. The Northwest Neighborhood. Um, as part of the pathways plan. I think we view this as really important to have because it will help to not only um. Maintain some of this open space in the area of which we're losing a substantial majority of, but also to connect. Far part of the neighborhood to other parts of the neighborhood. As envisioned in the pathways plan and in the Northwest Neighborhood Association Plan. So anyway, I would just. Hope that everybody would. Really do their homework. I mean, obviously, this project's been going on for a long time, so to take into full consideration. Um, the record, all of which I can't keep up with either as an individual moving into the neighborhood late and still working a seventy hour week job. Um, Councilman Clegg, I was. Interested in your question about edible plants. Um, because I did read the development agreement. It's now been over a year, but um. When I went to the developer meeting that was held on site. Um, I had read that in advance and noticed that the. Um, you know, the whole site was rearranged, and I suppose maybe that's preliminary, but I expected to see. Um, that particular feature. I can understand why the developer made some of the other changes that they did, which were probably. Beneficial, but that area was was closest to the orchard area was closest to the spoil banks canal.
Kathy, you're out of time. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Chris Mannion.
Madam Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Chris Mannion, and I live at eighty seven eighty three West Sloan. And I've been at this address since twenty fourteen. I'm a member of the Northwest Neighborhood Association. And currently I'm a board member at large for the um. Planning Council. Several of my comments were uh to address the issue of the pathway. And if that's no longer on the table, maybe some of my comments are moot. But I would still like to express myself. As a property owner and a member of this neighborhood, if that's agreeable to you, thank you. Um, from my driveway, I can see through to Hill Road. Directly to the prominence development when the structures are built. And without exaggeration. I can say that every aspect of this development has a direct bearing on my quality of living. In December twenty nineteen, the developer, and I was at this meeting. The developer held the required neighborhood meeting. I distinctly recall the developer's representative emphasizing. That care would be taken to preserve the feel and the accessibility to the natural habitat. Along the south boundary, the borders, the spoils bank. There were architectural drawings along with verbal assurance from the developer's representative. That there would be indeed a nature path. Along the drainage. Adjacent to and accessible via Bogart. And internal sidewalks from the buildings. Which would preserve the wildlife habitat habitat and provide neighbors and residents. With a green belt and walkway for enjoyment. Should this amenity not be provided? I would be very disappointed with the loss, and even more so, I'll be harmed by the continual loss of what is important in my neighborhood. Clearly, the original commitment from the developers representatives are not consistent with the recent placement of utility poles. The the permanent nature of which has been in question here. Along the same area that was understood to be part of the nature path. As much as I grieve the impact of the development. At least I thought there was an assurance that this natural wildlife habitat would be preserved. And enhanced with environmentally congruent landscaping along the walkway. To be enjoyed by both residents of prominence. And the neighbors who wish to access green space and wildlife habitat near our homes. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Chris. All right, we're going to go to folks online. Do we have anyone online who's wishing to testify?
Madam Mayor, I don't have any parties of record. Their hand raised.
Okay.
Actually, one moment.
Hello, can you hear me, Jennifer Swack?
Yes, we can hear you, Jennifer.
Okay, great. Um, Madam Mayor and City Council members, my name's Jennifer Swack. I live at eight nine five five Duncan Lane, Boise, Idaho. I'm a member of the Northwest Neighborhood Association. And I'm speaking in support of this appeal. We moved here to this part of Boise specifically for its geographical location. At the base of the foothills or the Boise Front, as is called by Audubon. Society and others. We wanted to live in an area. That had clean water nearby. In the canals and the ditches, thus supporting the wildlife that comes with it. I feel it is essential to my physical, mental, and spiritual health. To be able to enjoy nature daily in my yard and my neighborhood. This is therapeutic to myself and many others who walk in the neighborhood. Daily to distress from the pressures of the modern day work world. In the office, as well as all the congestion of high rise apartments and the traffic. I prefer mature trees, large shrubs, grasses, flowers, and all of the wildlife it supports. I can. And everything I can observe in this kind of an equal system. I refer you to appendix. See that was presented on our bird walk. In which there's been a hundred and thirty two different kinds of birds identified here. Along this part, the western part of the Boise Front. Currently, we've had to endure. Many of the large trees cut down along the spoils bank and all the land scraped bare of any shrubs for bird cover. We have now lost our Swainson's hawks. Who are yearly migratory birds from South Africa as they have lost their habitat. As a bird enthusiast, I find this very distressing. I am looking forward to this path along the spoils bank canal. That it was drafted. And agreed to in twenty nineteen. Where we discussed a six foot weather surface path along the spoils bank waterway easement. With a ten foot vegetative buffer between the path and the adjacent land uses. Discuss developing a continuous pathway and landscape buffer along the spoils bank canal. With a minimum twenty five foot buffer desired on each side of the canal. Emphasizing the need for a buffer from adjacent new development as part of good land use design. While the applicant consistently. While the applicant consistently agreed throughout the process that such a plan would be created, the latest verbal confirmation at the Developer Neighborhood Meeting in August twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two, the path is not shown on the site plan nor a buffer on the landscape plan. Rather, a sidewalk appears to function as the path along the part of the development adjacent to the new road without any vegetative buffer. This buffer is essential to protecting the riparian habitat for the birds. Again, please refer to Appendix C. We also need the shade for cooling the water for the trout.
Time.
Clean water.
Thank you so much for sharing with us tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other parties of record here this evening who would like to testify? All right, seeing none. We're going to go back to the applicant. Jeff Bauer for rebuttal. Actually, Jeff, real quick, before we do that, do we have any questions for staff at this point? All right, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Sorry, Jeff.
Jeff, before you start, either you or the staff, please clarify where the sidewalk's going to be on the south side of this particular application. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Clegg. That was one of the items I was planning to address.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, Jeff Bauer, six-oh-one West Bannock. I will be brief in rebuttal. I don't think there's too much more I need to state. I do want to assure you, I have not misled you. I think the characterization of this pathway in the appellant's memo is accurate. All along, we've shown this pathway. We've agreed to this pathway and it's been in the plans for this project. Because of that, they are correct. There is no specific condition of approval requiring that this pathway be constructed because it's included in the plans. And I'll just show you a quick excerpt from the development agreement, which I would argue is a condition that requires this pathway to be constructed. It says that the development and site work shall be constructed in accordance with the preliminary plat, which I just, which I've shown you previously, and shall be consistent with the development standards set forth below, as well as all the conditions of approval from the letter dated October twenty-second, twenty-nineteen, Exhibit C. And so that's Exhibit C is the standard decision letter that the city issues. And as is typical, it says, "Project must be constructed in accordance with the plans and specifications." And so those two things taken together, I would submit to you that do ultimately create a condition that requires this pathway to be constructed. One of the ironic things I think about the appellant challenging this is that if we were to try to tie this pathway to, you know, quote-unquote Phase Three, it would be here later in time. It would be three, probably three, two-plus years, three years before the pathway were to be constructed. So really, by allowing this Phase Two to continue out to Bogart, we will be constructing this pathway sooner. That's something we want to do, both for the Northwest Neighborhood at large and for our residents as well. Sidewalks. So sidewalks along the future local road are independent from the pathway that's proposed along the canal. This is probably the best figure, Councilmember Clegg, to illustrate that. But you see the new local road and the adjacent sidewalks. And then in the common lot to the south is the canal and the future pathway. I just want to, again, at a high level, say, you know, a lot of this is about, from the appellant's standpoint, ensuring that the larger context of the project is taken into consideration. I would submit again, I think, as the council has acknowledged, this site, all thirty-eight acres, have been, you know, planned comprehensively. That's what this preliminary plat does. And the application before you tonight is narrowly focused on the multifamily use on Lot Two, Block Two. Again, we believe the commission didn't commit any error and properly approved this PUD based on the applicable criteria. Happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Council Pro Tem Hallie Burton.
Jeff, thank you for answering some of the questions proactively and for bringing up the sidewalks. I think I had some confusion there. Was the pathway the sidewalk or those two separate things? And I think what I heard you say is that those are indeed two separate things. The sidewalk and the pathway aren't being shared as the same use.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, that's correct.
Madam Mayor and Jeff, I think one of the challenges here is that, like, people are trying to get a vision of what things are going to look like when it's all said and done. And they're having a hard time getting that vision because they see power lines, they don't see power lines. They don't see like a great image of a pathway. They see a sidewalk. They don't necessarily see trees. And so I think that that's some, one of the issues here is that there isn't a vision that people can kind of think about of what it's going to look like. So the sidewalk that you've got there, is there landscaping along the sidewalk as well?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hallie Burton, that's correct. I'm going to toggle quickly to the conceptual landscape plan. This is, again, is a component of the twenty-nineteen prominence project. And I think this does a good job illustrating the landscaping along the sidewalk as well as the pedestrian pathway intended to run adjacent to the canal.
Madam Mayor, I guess one final question here. I don't believe it's related to this application. But I feel like I should ask this question anyway because I don't know that there'll be another opportunity to ask it. As far as the design of the pathway outside of the application, what is the opportunity for city staff or community members at this point to give input on how that might look and feel? Or is it designed and ready to rock?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton. I think we'd be happy to take some direction from the council to work with staff to implement the master pathway plan, recognizing that the location and the dimension are already approved. And again, the portion of the pathway on the west side of this project does serve a dual purpose as being emergency access. So with those caveats, we're happy to work with staff to amend the design and take input to try to tailor it as best as possible to see the city's vision through.
Thanks, Jeff. I think that's a fair answer.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the rebuttal by Northwest Neighborhood Association.
Madam Mayor, Richard Delone, North, President of Northwest Neighborhood Association, ninety-one-seventy Hill Road. So the big picture here is this is the perfect reason that we have the appeal process. There is clearly confusion. There is clear, what, the big question that we have is what are the boundaries of the application? Is it unreasonable to ask for clarification of a pathway adjacent to, clearly part of Phase Three, we show in multiple ways, we're hearing conflicting information. The path is on the sidewalk, as was shown by the staff reporter diagram earlier, and as argued by the memorandum in response to our appeal. The applicant attorney in that memorandum says that the path is part of that sidewalk. Now we're hearing that it isn't part of the sidewalk. It's somewhere down in the easement along the Spoils Bank Canal. That was our original concern. The easement was not shown on the diagrams. Staff did not know the size of the easement and planning and zoning could not determine whether or not there was room for a pathway based on the information they were given. We still don't have that information. We just heard two conflicting things, I believe. One, that the dimensions of the pathway had already been determined. You did just hear that from the applicant's attorney. And yet, the pathway is to be, yet to be determined somewhere south of this path, of the sidewalk that is shown. So I'm just hearing all sorts of confusing issues. And this is the reason that planning and zoning needs to be able to weigh in and vet this according to the comprehensive plan and according to all of the entire body of evidence. And I'm confused at direction or comments constraining my constituents, my neighborhood constituents, about what is germane. Because our appeal is very much questioning what is the legal authority for taking what city council saw as Phase Three as this large entire piece of land in the southeast corner? And then taking parts of that out, essentially, as we saw in the aerial photo, and saying, no, those are part of Phase Two. Allowing Planning and Zoning Commission to believe that they would still be able to weigh in on Phase Two, as the record shows, the transcript shows. They very much made their decision on the belief that they were going to be able to weigh in on those lands that are now considered part of Phase Two. But Phase Two has already gone through the approval process. So you see that just the basic legal problem that we have here, the basic fairness problem, basic due process problem, and that's where all of our errors stem from. That's why it is an arbitrary and capricious decision when the legal authority is confused. That's why the statutory authority has been exceeded when planning and zoning rules on something different than than city council had ruled on. And you can see that, if you read the transcript, you can see they're doing their best. They're trying to ensure that there is a pathway here that is a good pathway that fulfills the goals of the comprehensive plan. And yet, they're being denied that. And that's the entire reason for having the appeals process. And I think it's just very clear that the decision was made in air. And I believe if you had them up here today in front of you, they would say, yes, we thought that we could not, that the Phase Three boundaries were different than what, than what we were shown. Remember, that original diagram of the phases was never shown to planning and zoning. Because as a neighborhood association, we had no reason to bring it in because that was not in question. And so they've made their decision in air. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Are there any further questions for the Neighborhood Association?
Madam Mayor, Richard, I'm confused. Are you, do you prefer that this pathway be in Phase Three and not be constructed for two or three years? Or would you like to see it constructed this summer?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Clegg, or Councilmember Clegg, thank you for the question. What we want to ensure is that it happens and it happens in the right way. Now, the history of our neighborhood, as you know, is really marked by plans that often don't come to fruition. That is why, for instance, we have finally, after thirty-five years, a fire station that has been built along Bogart. So we've heard multiple things. If you can get an agreement from the applicant right now.
Mr. Llewellyn, I'm going to cut in. I think that you've answered the council member's question. Are you happy with the answer that you received? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, any other questions for Mr. Llewellyn? Thank you so much, Richard. All right, with that, the public hearing is closed. What is the will of the council?
Madam Mayor. I'm going to move that we deny the appeal. And if I get a second, I've got some comments and I think some additional direction for staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council Pro Tem Hallie Burton.
Madam Mayor, first of all, you know, I'll apologize. I think that there has been some confusion about this specific application. And reading through the transcripts in detail, I read every single word, including your trout or crawdads, as they were. There was some confusion. Where I disagree is I do believe at the end of the conversation, they got to the point where they realized that we are approving something very specific and very narrow. And that it's this planned development, planned residential development on a very specific piece of property. And I believe that they did get to that at the end, and that's what they based their decision on. And I believe that that is the application that's in front of us as well. So I don't believe that they made an arbitrary or capricious decision or that they aired. However, I believe myself, the city, has done a disservice to the pathways master plan and neighborhoods in their ability to be involved in what that really looks like as a long-term vision. And I believe Kathy, Kathy, Kathy brought that up in the past, Pathways Master Plan notes. It's the intention of the Pathways Master Plan that we look at these similar to the ways that we look at parks and other open space and that they're going to be different in different areas, the same way that you all recently weighed in on Primrose Park and how that was going to look, the amenities that you wanted to see immediately and some of the visioning for the future. We should be doing the same thing for our Pathways Master Plan. And when we are working with developers, those conversations should exist already between neighborhood associations and the city. So we have an idea of what those pathways are going to look like. So I don't blame anybody for being frustrated in that they don't have that clear vision. And something that is so important to you, so important to me, so important to other council members and across the city, that we get these pathways in and we do it right, that we make sure that there is a shared vision on how they're going to look so that when there is a development that goes into place, that we're accomplishing that shared vision and we're not doing it in a patchwork pattern that isn't, that isn't this thing that we share as a community. And so my direction to staff, and I actually had the conversation with the chief of staff about this earlier today, is that we're doing a great job at getting some of these sections in, piece by piece by piece. But we need to start looking at this as a long-term vision. And I really think that our staff, especially in some of these top ten areas that you brought up, Richard, that we start to say, okay, which of these are actually feasible? Which are we going to start working on? And which ones do we know there's going to be development around so that we can have those conversations before it actually gets to this point? And so that's my direction to staff. That's my commitment with the rest of the council members that I'll be working on as well, that we try to get this vision in place first. And so that way, as the development happens, you know, you all will know what that will look like and you'll have that opportunity to weigh in. But as far as this particular application that we're hearing in this appeal, I think that the commission got it right when they finally got to the point where they realized this was the decision that they were supposed to be making, not the larger conversation in pathways. But I don't blame people for wanting to go there because it's going to be an amazing thing and we have an opportunity to do it right. I don't think it's too late to get it right at this point.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Pageant.
I agree with the Council Pro Tem that it's not too late to get it right at this point and that more work is needed to clarify some of these plans. I also agree we should deny the appeal. But I want to kind of make a record on a couple of things. First, nobody told anybody not to speak tonight or not to speak on any particular topic. The most helpful thing that anyone can hear from a review body is, here are the things we are most interested in, in an effort to give the applicant or the appellant an opportunity to speak to the things that we think are most important. Second, there was confusion in the Planning and Zoning Commission and it largely came from irrelevant, confused arguments being made that didn't go to the heart of what the application was. This pathway is not part of the conditional use permit before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So they were very confused to talk about it and discuss it. As Councilmember Hallie Burton said, they got to the right result. That process of talking it through is deliberation. It's what they're supposed to do. And my final comment. It's not helpful to us when we hear from
when we hear from the parties, either party in any application, who we rely on and have to trust, statements that are just demonstrably false. There is a development agreement here. It says, as clear as can be, that final approval shall be subject to the preliminary plat. And the preliminary plat includes a pathway. So to say that there's no development agreement here that requires a pathway is false. You have everybody scrambling to try to find the development agreement, trying to rely on the applicant. And when we get there and we see that it's false, we get to the end of the confusion, and then we're asked to reverse the Planning and Zoning Commission because they're confused. It makes a mess. We really depend on the parties to be straight and clear with us. Because, believe it or not, we're essentially volunteers as well. So on the merits of the narrow conditional use application that was proposed here, it's pretty straightforward. This meets the conditions of approval that were set forth and the conditions in our code that require it. The ancillary issues do generate confusion, but as, as it was indicated and came out, they're not part of this parcel, they're not part of this application. They are part of the plat. There's no way to finish this project without building the pathway. We spent most of the time discussing it tonight, but it's just not relevant. And so indications to the appellant or to other parties that we would like to move on from that or try to obtain more information on other issues really is an effort to help. It's an effort to hear the things that we think are most germane to try to get to the right result.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Clegg.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. I also found the transcript and the process to be a bit confusing. I think in the end, I conclude that the applicant actually was trying to ensure that the pathway got done more quickly and comprehensively by putting it all in Phase Two rather than splitting it between Phase Two and Phase Three, as was originally shown on the concept plan. Concept plan is just that, a concept. And the time to talk about the canal bank pathway frankly would have been during the preliminary plat hearing for Phase Two, which is where the pathway is included. All of us missed that. I don't know, frankly, I can't remember whether I noticed that it was part of that. I agree with Councilmember Hallie Burton that the other thing we can do better is ensure that as these pathways go forward, they're looked at comprehensively and not piece by piece, and that they're looked at conceptually. Again, I don't know what kind of pathway you all prefer here. Is it an equestrian one? Is it a paved one? Is it more finished or less finished? And because we don't have that kind of detail in the master pathway plan, we don't yet have a process identified for getting to that kind of detail. I think we ended up where we were tonight. I believe the end result of this is going to be quite good. I think by this summer, the developer is intent on having a final plat that will include the pathway and get the pathway built in this year, which will give all of you that place that you long for to walk along this canal sooner than you would if it were included in this phase. It will require some work by everyone. The developer, who I'm sure is still online and listening, needs to work with staff, needs to work with all of you, needs to work with Councilmember Hallie Burton and other council members to ensure that there is a vision for this pathway that meets what this neighborhood wants and that that vision is carried through as the pathways build. Having said all that, what we're deciding tonight is a very narrow conditional use permit based on the fact that this land was not zoned for multifamily because of the lack of a fire station, that they were allowed to bring forward a conditional use for multifamily when the fire station was planned, with an understanding it couldn't go forward until the fire station is under construction. And that's exactly what they've done. As I look at it, they have met all of the conditions. I have some concerns still about the landscaping and the edible plants in the orchard. And I am quite confident that staff will review those very diligently and make sure that they're done correctly. I'm sure all of you will also keep an eye on those as it comes forward. But other than that very small concern, I didn't see anything in this application that didn't meet the original conditional use permit or the original condition on the full concept plan. And so I will be supporting.
Thank you. Good. I'm just going to add a couple of thoughts here. And I think that one of the things that we missed in this bigger picture discussion about the pathway, which we approved as a condition in 2019 as part of this full development, was that this is actually a very nice multifamily product. I think it's much improved from the concept that we saw in 2019. And I think that it's going to be really beautiful out there. And so I definitely am supportive of Planning and Zoning Commission's decision in this one. They definitely, you know, got to the right place by the end of that hearing. Even though it started out a little bit chaotic, the chaos settled out. They knew what they were deciding on. They knew the facts around it, and they made a sound decision. So I'll be supporting the motion. Without anything further, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
With nothing else on our agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. We're adjourned. Thanks for coming out, everyone.